Meeting, this is the Emeryville Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, January 22nd. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Gunkel.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Vice Chair Comerly.
Here.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Comerly. You've been promoted. Vice Chair Tan has an excused absence this evening. Chair Moss.
Here.
So we have a quorum of six commissioners.
All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment. So this is a time for anyone who would wish to, anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak on something that is not on the agenda, please come forward.
I would like to talk about briefly family-friendly housing in Emeryville. It's a topic that's much talked about, much ballyhooed over the last 10 years. The way that the city is set up right now is that there is a distinction made at the planning department between affordable housing and family-friendly housing. Those two are mutually exclusive, according to the city of Emeryville. But let me pause for a moment before I get into that and ask, why do we seek families in Emeryville? Why do we want family-friendly housing? Well, I think there's two reasons. The primary reason is to support our schools. Because the city has, if for no other reason, has a $22 million relationship with the school district. Also, there's, you know, there's other considerations such as supporting children in our midst. But never mind that, we have a $22 million relationship with the school district and they are our partners. So we need to support the schools. And that's the primary reason why we seek family-friendly housing. And then another reason is for diversity, diversity of housing, diversity in population. We have a lot of, you know, kind of sort of tech workers, you know, young men in their 30s perhaps. We want another demographic, and that could be children. So we like the idea of children. But the problem is, the primary reason, which is to support our schools. So if we don't have a relationship between family-friendly housing and affordability, we subvert our primary function, our goal of why we want families here, and that is to support the schools. Because at market rate, the market rate as it currently is right now, people will move into Emeryville with families presumably, in family-friendly housing at market rate. But they're not going to send their children to our schools because they don't. People with those sorts of financial resources don't send their children to public schools in general, and specifically certainly not in Emeryville, with the schools being such that they are. So we're subverting our own goals for having family-friendly housing, for bringing families here, by not connecting affordability and with family-friendly housing. Those two should be inextricably connected. Because we don't serve our primary function, which is to support the schools, if we don't do that. So food for thought. We need to pay attention to what we're doing here, and that's why we need to support family-friendly housing. It needs to be connected to affordability.
Thank you.
Just an idea. Thank you.
I've just, I've got a comment on the general plan, but I don't know if I should wait till they, we have that on the agenda here, a general, a progress report on the general plan?
Um, I, oh, that's the general plan annual progress report? So that is an item that looks at the progress of implementation of the general plan over the last year? So if it's related to that specifically, you can wait if it's more general in nature than...
I think it's more general. I can just go ahead and give my comment. I just didn't want to go unheard. A lot of you are new faces to me. I'm with New Logic Research. My name's Rick Johnson. We're located on 67th Street, over on the other end of Emeryville. We started our company here in 1989, a little startup over here, just four or five of us. We've got 70 employees now, working out of the bar facility on 67th Street. With this general plan, and I was here quite a few meetings ago, giving my sort of opinion on what's happening to us, as one of the few manufacturers left in the city. Through the rezoning, we've been sort of structurally rezoned as a warehouse district. And our housing capability was taken away at the time, the big boom-boom when Pulte was doing all the developments around us. And we're starting to feel a little squeezed with the residential that's going on around us, but at the same time, we're being told by the city that we're not zoned to be able to sell our property for the highest and best use. Subsequently, what's been happening, we get a little bit of complaints about trucks backing up, and on 67th Street, if you ever try to drive that, any time during the day, we've got a new neighbor now that double-parked trucks all up and down. Nobody's got loading docks. We happen to have a loading dock. We're fortunate that way. And so out of our 70 employees now, we've relocated 20 of them to Nevada. And we're now considering moving the rest of the company basically to Nevada. And again, with the highest and best use for the property, as real estate owners as well, even though this general plan is underway, we feel that we're being sort of hand-tied. On the one hand, being squeezed out by the residential that's going on in that neighborhood, which is a real, when you go down on San Pablo there, things are looking really good. But we feel that not only are we being sort of forced out of the city, but on the other hand, we're not allowed to actualize the real value of the property that we invested in over 12 years ago. And we've been in Emeryville since the inception. I moved into Pacific Park Plaza in 1984. We started our company in 1989. And so I just wanted to be heard on this subject. I know the general plan is in motion and all that. And I've been told by some people on the commission, none of you look familiar, but that, well, bring us a deal and we'll think about it. And I just basically wanted to throw that question out, is like, we have to have a deal in order to sell our property for its highest and best use? Or is this thing in motion? And do we just have to sort of live with it and take our lumps and move on to Nevada? And so I just wanted to put all that on record. So, any of you that care to talk to me, again, Rick Johnson at New Logic Research, I'd be happy to talk to any of you on this subject. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the action recap. Does anyone, have any... Did, does anyone have any comments on the minutes?
Excuse myself for this absence.
I'd move, that we approve them as submitted?
One second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Vanessa recuses.
We had five ayes and one abstention.
Abstention.
And one absent.
Great, so the action recap is approved. All right, then we will move on to the director's report.
All right. What did I do with it? Here it is. Let me first tell you what the city council has done since your last meeting. Your last meeting, of course, was on December 11th. They have met twice since then, on December 16th and January 20th. On December 16th, the council held a study session on the draft economic development strategy and work plan for the next two fiscal years, and provided staff direction on that. They also approved a request for proposals for a public art master plan, which will include provisions for district banners as well as city gateways. The council heard an informational report on unreinforced masonry and soft-story buildings, and requested staff to pursue an investigation of soft-story buildings. That's more of a building division item. They approved the plans and specifications for the Bay Trail bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Christie Avenue between Shellmount and Powell Streets, and authorized the city engineer to advertise for bids. And finally, they heard an update from the owner's representative on the status of construction of the Emeryville Center of Community Life project. On January 20th, this past Tuesday, the council held a study session on the Sherwin-Williams project, which was very well-attended. There were a number of speakers, mostly from 1500 Park Avenue and the Artists Co-op. The major concerns included, that were expressed by the speakers and by the council, included traffic, shadows, building massing, family-friendly housing, ownership housing, and density. The council also unanimously approved the Emeryville Oakland Berkeley Transit Study, finally, so kudos to Diana. That is now a done deal and all approved. The council unanimously approved a conditional use permit, a major design review, and setback variance application to demolish two existing residential units and replace them with two new units at 5532 Doyle Street. As you may recall, this project was approved by the commission at your last meeting on December 11th. And finally, this is not really related to the commission, but I thought you'd be interested to know that the council heard a report on minimum wage and directed staff to prepare an ordinance for a minimum wage tied to our living wage, which is a little over $14 an hour. This would be higher than the minimum wages in Berkeley, Oakland, and San Francisco, and it's to take effect by July 1st. So we have our marching orders to put that together. And finally, in other news, I just want to remind you all that the scoping meeting for the Sherwin-Williams Environmental Impact Report is next Tuesday, five days from today, next Tuesday evening, January 27th, here in the council chambers at 6:30 PM. And again, this scoping session is about the EIR, and what topics are to be covered by the EIR, and what alternatives to the project are to be looked at in the EIR. It's not about the merits of the project itself. It's about the EIR. And while it is a public meeting, and everyone is invited to attend, and it will be broadcast on ETV, live and videotaped, it is not a planning commission meeting nor a city council meeting. The meeting will be facilitated by our EIR consultant. So that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
I have one question about the council's direction on the minimum wage ordinance. Was there direction that the full living wage would be effective in July, or that it would be phased in in any way?
You mean the full minimum wage?
Yeah.
I believe the direction was to have it take effect on July 1st, without any phase-in period. Right? I mean, we're still sort of fleshing out exactly what the direction was, but it was pretty clear that they want a living, a minimum wage in place tied to our living wage by July 1st. So we have a lot of work to do between now and then. That means effective July 1st. And that means it takes two readings of an ordinance, which doesn't take effect for 30 days. So basically, that means the first reading of the ordinance has to be in April. So, we're working on it.
Question for you. Do we have any updated information on the pedestrian bridge, the Bay Center or Bay Street in Horton?
Do you want to answer that, Michael?
Yeah, so briefly, the monies, the monies that the redevelopment agency had pledged for the South Bayfront Bridge had been tied up in litigation against the Department of State, I'm sorry, the State Department of Finance. And if you recall, we had, you know, the successor, the city's position was that the agreements between the city and the successor agency, which allowed for the transfer of those funds, were proper, were proper transfers. The State Department of Finance had taken the position that those agreements had, were invalidated by the dissolution law. We litigated that issue, and the trial court agreed with us. The state then appealed that decision, and we received a decision last week. And the appellate court affirmed the trial court decisions found for the city, and so, and agreed with the city's position that those agreements were valid, and therefore the funds were properly transferred. However, that being said, the state still has the option of requesting further review before the state Supreme Court. I think that review, that time for requesting a review is about 30 days or so. We do not know if they will or will not request further appellate review. And certainly, the state Supreme Court has no obligation to take the application for further review. So stay tuned.
As a taxpayer to the state, I'd like to ask them to not waste our money and fight this any further.
We should know by your next meeting whether or not they have appealed it to the, or petitioned the Supreme Court.
Right. And the other thing I'll add, too, is that if the Supreme Court accepts the petition, there's a whole, there's a whole other briefing schedule that will take place, and it'll be at least a year or so before that review process has run its course.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Great, thanks. Then we will move on to the disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. So this is a time for any commissioners to disclose any potential conflicts of interest on any of the items before us tonight, or any ex parte communications that you've had regarding those items.
So I'll be recusing myself on the first study session, item 8A, because of proximity of our residence to the property. I don't think I've had any discussions with any of the developers since our last meeting.
I think, as I disclosed at our last meeting, I did meet with the applicant for the marketplace, but not since our last meeting.
I met with them also, but it was some time ago.
Yeah, as did I. It was, I believe, in November or October.
I think we all did.
Okay, all right. Great, thank you. Then we will move on to the rest of our agenda tonight. So the first item is the general plan annual progress report. Can we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, council members.
Wiggle, no, don't do that, Diana. No. Don't use that. Oh, no.
It's on our screens.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, we can see what you're doing.
Well, projector's just dead.
Is the projector on?
It's in the upper left-hand corner.
It's on just a little while.
The projector's on.
No, no, the projector's...
Yeah, it is. It's on. There you go.
All these fun images in there.
It's a good issue.
Because earlier today...
Turn this on. Road was on.
I will need this for everything tonight.
Is this going to be...
Oh.
Come on.
I get to present, Catherine Furpo and I get to present the general plan annual report, which covers implementation of the general plan and the housing element, and it has a new little section about the housing successor. Implementing the land use element, you folks have made 12 decisions last year, including the Hyatt Place Hotel, and held important study sessions on 6701 Shellmount, Christie Avenue Park Expansion, 3706 San Pablo, Sherwin-Williams, and Marketplace. And in terms of area plans, in Park Avenue, they got a park into the capital improvement program, a dog park under the 40th Street Bridge. And implementing the North Hollis Plan, there's a Greenway section under construction south of 59th Street. In terms of economic development, the city is, council just had a study session, I think, on the draft economic development strategy, and staff helped to put on a Berkeley/Emeryville Bioscience meetup. Implementing the transportation element, we now have a capital improvement program with a lot of bike pit improvements. The council approved a traffic calming concept for Horton that did not include barriers. The city's installed bicycle video detection in four, at four intersections, and we adopted a traffic impact fee with vehicle trips as the way of deciding what people pay. We have participated in several countywide planning efforts. The Emeryville Berkeley Oakland Transit Study is done, and the city has tried out two-hour parking zones and found that, yes, they do work in keeping turnover for the retail. And as these pictures show, the safe routes to transit on San Pablo Avenue south of 40th is under construction. Implementing the parks, open place, public facilities, and services element, in the capital improvement program, there's a skate spot, the Temescal Park Adeline entrance, and reconstruction of Davenport Park. And the Temescal Creek Community Garden has opened. There are events in the park, movies, picnics, and shows for the kids. This is in Hollis Park. The fire department conducted four personal emergency preparation classes in different parts of town. The Emeryville Center of Life had its groundbreaking. And the city runs a play program at Annie Yates School. In terms of urban design, pedestrian and bicycle amenities, you required them in the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, and requested them in study sessions for the Shellmount Residential Marketplace and Hyatt Place Hotel projects. In public art, the city has solicited designs for the Shellmount Powell Bridge Public Art Project, and those submittals are in the link. And there's a public art master plan, RFP, that includes looking at gateways. And this is just from the art purchase, from the exhibition. In the sustainability element, the city has installed 68 bike racks and gotten a grant for 12 lockers at Amtrak. We're testing fuel cell vehicles, and two of the city's projects will have green building ratings. ACCL will have a lead rating, and the 3706 that you'll be looking at in just a minute will be going for Greenpoint rating. And then, of course, there's off-the-grid at the public market on Saturday afternoons now. So general progress on the general plan, not including the housing element, it's made, we've made progress on 66 actions this year. Seven were completed before. One was started last year and will hopefully be done next year. Two are expect, are later, so we're not dealing with them yet. One is ongoing but didn't apply to any projects this year. And the only two that we haven't started that are supposed to be short-term are the Crescent Marsh path. And now I'd like to have Catherine Furpo come talk about the housing element.
This is a separate report that we do to HCD, but it's actually part of the general plan report. Goes into the general plan report as well as to HCD. This slide is the, our progress in meeting the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And as you can see, we actually made a lot of progress. We're at 65% for the very low-income units, only 5% for our low-income, low-income units, 24% for moderate-income units, and we exceeded the market rate unit requirement. Oops. Sorry.
Just press escape.
There we go. I actually prefer this. So as far as the housing element and the programs, we made progress on 41 of the programs. 11 programs completed before, had already completed before 2014. Three were about redevelopment, two are ongoing but did not apply to any projects in 2014, and two required county programs that were not funded in 2014. The affordable housing set aside, we have two projects, we had two projects under construction in 2014, Park on Powell, with eight very low-income units and 13 moderate-income units. They are renting up those units right now. ME on Christie has 29 very low-income units, and they are marketing those units right now. They expect to be occupied in March. And Park on Powell is expected to be occupied sometime in February, at least the first phase, first building. The success, the, we have a new, the housing successor is working on three sites right now. This is the new report that we have to do, was started this year, about the housing successor and any housing assets that are, that the city holds. We have three sites right now. 3706 San Pablo, which obviously you know where we're at on that, we're seeing it next. 6150 Christie is in pre-development. You saw that at your last meeting. There was a talk about what would go at those sites. And 3602 Adeline is those very small sites that are on the corner of Adeline and 36th. They are, we're in the process of doing the environmental assessment on them. 3900 Adeline, the building permit was issued, it's 80, 80 units, five of which are very low, and seven are moderate. There's 80 units in Emeryville, by the way. It's actually a larger project, but we can only count the units that are in Emeryville in this report. And as you know, we've had a study session on 3706 San Pablo, and we're moving very fast on that project. And that's the end of the report. Do you have any questions?
Just one quick, I don't know if you can answer. How do our percentages stack up with other areas, cities in our region?
Very well. Actually, ABAG just gave us a, an analysis of the other cities. I believe there's only two other cities or counties that have achieved more than we have. But it depends on what you're looking at, because some people have done better in the low, but worse in the very low. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to say, but we've done very well compared to other jurisdictions.
Is that cities in the Bay Area, or...
Cities and counties, yes. The nine-county Bay Area.
Do you have any explanation about the very low versus low, why the low is so, and what exactly is low? Remind me again.
So when we had redevelopment, redevelopment required that we do a production requirement for very low incomes and moderate income, but there was no production requirement for low. So the way the city's affordable housing set-aside ordinance worked was, it was, 6% of the units were very low, and 9% of the rental units were very low, and 9% of the rental units were at moderate, and we didn't have a low-income production requirement. As you may recall, in our impact fees, we are, we have changed that policy, so if there, if a developer of rental housing chooses to do in lieu rather than pay the impact fee, then it's 6.9 units at low. So we're trying to find that balance in our, in our inventory of affordable housing.
I have a question for Diana. I was, I just was a little unclear how off-the-grid related to sustainability.
There's a policy about farmers' markets, and we thought that was kind of close, and we could mention that we're doing something sort of like it.
Diana, what's the timeline on the art for the Powell Street/Shellmount?
So the PAC, the art, the art PAC actually wanted to go back and have, they have actually recommended one of the proposals, but they asked to go back and look at some color, colors of the lighting. And so I don't know when it's coming, but there has been a slight delay in taking it to, taking the final approval to council, because the PAC wants to see some more information on the colors of the lights of the one that they chose.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, then we will open the public comment for this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the general plan annual progress report?
Okay, I'd like to talk for a moment about the general plan and density, housing density. Okay, it's pretty much the entire city, the power elite here in the city, that would be the seven of you and others. Everybody agrees that density is an inherent good here in our city. Increasing the density. Why is that? Why is density an inherent good? Well, there's an historical context here, and if you look at that, it's, this was, this was, the progenitor for this density as inherent good, a concept, comes back, comes back to the idea of the late '80s, early '90s idea of smart growth. The idea is... The idea is that we should build in, do infill housing and infill development in our urban cores so as not to have exacerbate suburban sprawl, which was considered, which is considered inherently bad, suburban sprawl. So that's why density is considered a good thing. We've inherited that here, being an inner-city city. So density is good. How much density? Well, that's an open question. If we, we could make 100-story towers everywhere in Emeryville, but most people would say that that's too dense and not good, even though density, increasing the density is an inherent good. So there is some amount that's too much. How much is too much? Well, we've never had that debate here in Emeryville. Instead, what we've done is we have deferred to the developers. We've let the developers tell us how much density is the correct amount of density. But that's a flaw. We shouldn't be letting the developers define for us what is good vis-à-vis density, because they have a different metric than we have. What drives them is profit motivation. And what drives us is livability. So there's a conflict here. So I put it to you that we should stop, we should have a debate about what's the proper amount of density that's good. And we should stop letting the developers tell us what the amount is good for us, because, you know, developers will steer us wrong in their chasing of profit maximizing. So I think we need to have this debate about density and what's the proper amount for us. And yes, it is an inherent good, but it has a finite amount, and we should have that debate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll bring this back for discussion. Anyone have anything to offer on the general plan annual progress report?
We have no resolution, I don't believe, or do we? Did we have? No, we don't have a resolution on this item. We would simply ask for a motion of the commission to recommend city council approval of the annual report.
I so move.
I would second. I think that's a very good job, and I think the city's doing good.
Thank you.
Do we want to roll call vote?
Want me to call the roll?
Okay.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Chair Moss?
Aye.
Six ayes, the motion is approved. We will pass your recommendation on to the city council. Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to public hearings. So our one public hearing tonight is 3706 San Pablo Avenue Affordable Housing. We have the staff report, please.
So while we wait, I'll just ask this given school. Good evening, commissioners. Happy New Year to you. So we are first starting with 3706 San Pablo Avenue Affordable Project. As you know, this is on the southeast corner of what we are calling the Star Intersection on the southern portion of the city. It's about a little over an acre site, and it is split between Oakland and Emeryville, where majority of the site is in Emeryville, and Oakland has ceded jurisdiction to Emeryville for both the planning entitlements as well as the building permits. In terms of a little background, this property was purchased by the redevelopment agency, and as part of its dissolution, it was transferred to the city to be developed in accordance with the redevelopment plan. And in last year, an ERN was approved by the council with the EH, the current developer, with the following provisions. That it would be 87-unit rental housing for low and very low-income households, an average unit size of a little over 1,000 square feet, an average of 2.29 bedrooms per unit, a set asideing of 11 units for special-needs populations, and that the project should include amenities like community space, outdoor courtyard, and landscape spaces, and commercial space fronting San Pablo Avenue. The commission reviewed this project at a study session in October. The project was generally well-received by you, and you felt that it was of a high-quality design, and the variety in programming of the open space and the unit mix was appreciated. The commission did not see a problem with making the findings for providing parking above the maximum allowed by the planning regulations. And the commission wanted to see the courtyard elevations as part of the packet, as well as street-side elevation that showed the mass building. The commission also recommended participation in the AC Transit EZ Pass program and inclusion of a grease interceptor in the commercial space. So this is the project. This is the ground floor. You see about a little less than 7,000 square feet of a commercial retail space fronting San Pablo. So this is San Pablo here, 37th Street at the bottom, and West MacArthur at the top. There are three townhomes along MacArthur, and the lobby and the amenity areas is at this corner of San Pablo and MacArthur. And you have a parking garage at the back with some bike parking, as well as a bike It's a two-level parking garage, and on the third floor, you have a courtyard space, and each unit, each floor has laundry, as well as a community or a teen room or some community amenity on each level, as well as laundry hookups at each level. The fourth, fifth plans are similar, and you can see the laundry hookups here, and there's a storage facility. The sixth floor, in addition to the laundry and the storage areas, also has a little sky deck, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. In terms of unit mix, this is the unit mix and the size. This has remained unchanged from the previous study session. This kind of tells you the cross-sections. You can see there are two levels of parking with four levels of units. The maximum height that this building reaches is 73 feet. These are some of the San Pablo elevations on the top and 37th elevation on the bottom. There's a mix of materials, stucco, fiberglass cement lap siding, fiberglass cement panels, and brick veneer. And the applicant will talk a little bit more about their idea, the design concept between the mix of colors and materials. These are the MacArthur boulevard elevation at the top, and this is the rear elevation of the building facing east. This landscape plan, two, no trees are being removed as part of this project. Two additional trees on San Pablo will be installed. There are about two new ones on MacArthur, and there'll be six new ones on 37th Street. If you recall, there's this little space here, which at the study session, there was an issue as to the use of the space. A dog run was at that time proposed, but the adjacent neighbor had an issue with the dog run. So what is being proposed right now is a bocce ball code. And what we also have here is a vegetable garden. This is the amenity plan on the ground floor. Other than the reception and the lobby areas, you also have a club room, you have fitness center, you have a homework room, and also you have office space. This is the courtyard landscape plan. This is a combination of a central courtyard. There's an overlook facing San Pablo, got a zen garden concept, and there's also a community room at this level. This is sort of the sky deck. It's installed with outdoor kitchen and dining area, as well as lounge area. These are some of the photo sims that have been prepared for the project. These are the different viewpoints that you're going to see. This is the location, this is before. This is the mass building. This is on San Pablo. And this is after. This is before, West MacArthur looking west. And that's the after. And you can see the mass, the new proposed mass building as well. It's not very clear, but it's there. This is before, and that's after. This is the lane splitter. And this is after, and you see the mass building here. This is before, and it's after. This is on 37th Street, and this is after. In terms of the zoning district, that this is in, the base zone is M U R S, which is mixed-use with residential south. There are three other overlay zones, neighborhood retail, transit hub, and pedestrian priority overlay. The use classification is a multi-unit residential, which is allowed by right. The commercial uses, at this point, they have not identified specific tenants, but they hope to include some combination of retail, food establishment, and space for art galleries. The size of this site is over one acre, so the whole project would need a conditional use permit. The base density at this site is 85 units per acre, and they are below the base density at 77.3. The floor area, the base is two, and the bonus is three. They are below the bonus, and they're within the base at 1.87. The base height is 55, with bonus height is 73, so they do, their height is 73, so they do need to provide bonus points of 90. So the applicant has identified the following categories in terms of how they're going to obtain 90 bonus points. One is energy efficiency. They have made the commitment to exceed the California Energy Code by 10%. They have also made the commitment to obtain LEED gold or equivalent, which gives them 25 points. They have made the commitment to provide free transit passes, one per unit. And as this is 100% affordable housing project, we believe that the project also qualifies under the flexible public benefit category for at least 20 points. In terms of these commitments, these commitments have been incorporated as conditions of approval. So we will make sure at various stages where it is relevant, particularly the building permit stage, to make sure that these things are happening. Parking. So in terms of parking for this project, this is, as I'd mentioned, it is in the transit hub zone, which reduces the required parking by 50%. In addition, this is 100% affordable units, which reduces the estimated demand by another half. So when you calculate, the required residential is between 37 to 47 spaces, and the proposed is 108. This means that they do need a use permit for parking more than, providing more than the maximum. At this point, since the commercial tenants are not yet identified, we cannot calculate that, but the commercial space is just a little under 7,000, little under 7,000 square feet. And by our local, by our planning regulations, anything that is local serving commercial uses of 5,000 square feet or less in the neighborhood retail overlay zone, it does not trigger any parking, so it's just an extra 1,000 square feet that would require parking. Bicycle parking required is one short term and 87 long term. They are providing, they're exceeding the required minimums by providing five short term and 96 long term. In terms of, there are other parking-related standards in the planning regulations relating to stall dimensions, aisle widths, loading, and electrical vehicle charging stations. The project meets all these requirements, and these have been outlined in the staff report, so I'm not going to go into details at this point. In addition, there are the standards relating to open space, courtyard, trash, and recycling requirements. Again, how they comply are detailed in the staff report, and they do comply. Design guidelines, this is just a few of the guidelines that the project complies with. Other guidelines are outlined in the staff report. So there are certain findings that the commission needs to make today. One is the use permit findings for bonus height. And the finding is that the proposed project will provide public benefits, whoops. This is going to be an issue. No, it's not on. Yeah, I should have printed it down. So you guys can see the slides? What is the last slide there?
Findings.
Findings, use permit findings for bonus height.
Public benefit, totally 90% are provided through LEED certification or equivalent is where we are.
If we turn on the screens around, so we can see it out here. And you can share with your name. Oh, it's not going to work.
It's getting there.
There you go.
Yay. Okay. Get your binoculars out.
Okay, so I'll just go ahead. That's good. So in terms of the findings that you need to make for the use permit, the use permit findings for bonus height is, like I had mentioned, they need 90 bonus points. And the way they are proposing to do that is by providing, committing to LEED gold certification, exceeding the California Energy Code by 10%, providing free transit passes per unit, and also the fact that it's providing a flexible public benefit in terms of providing 100% of affordable units. The other use permit findings that are, that need to be made is for parking, they're providing more parking than is allowed, than the maximum that is permitted. It's, I believe, from 47 is the maximum that they're allowed, and they're providing 108. So the finding that you need to make is that the applicant has convincingly demonstrated that additional parking is required to meet the anticipated parking demand of the post users. One of the reasons why the required parking is so low is because it qualifies for two reductions. One, the fact that it is in the transit hub, and the other, the fact that it's 100% affordable housing. This is also a family-friendly project, and family-friendly, and family-friendly units typically require more parking than is, than non-friendly friendly. And the applicant, who is an affordable housing developer in his, in their other projects in the Bay Area, have felt that this is the amount of parking that is usually typically needed for a project of this size. In addition, there is also some commercial space for which we have not accounted for the parking, so that would, the additional parking would add to that. The other finding that you need to make is that there is, there is not an overreliance on automobiles, and it will not adversely affect transit, bicycle, or pedestrian access to the site adjacent users. As I'd mentioned before, they do provide free transit passes to all units, and this will promote the use of transit in the area. They also, as part of this project, will be making improvements along their frontages, including sidewalks, and that would improve pedestrian environment, and they also provide more bicycle parking than is required. So in addition to these findings, you also have your normal major, major conditional use findings. And these are general findings in terms of the compatibility of the project to the general plan, to design guidelines, to adjacent neighborhood, and the fact that the design is of high quality, and how the, how the project meets. These various findings are out. These, these various findings are outlined in the resolution that was attached in the staff report. We have also conducted a traffic study for this project, which was attached to the staff report. The study identified no major impacts. They did have some recommendations regarding to site circulation, and these recommendations have been incorporated as conditions of approval in your packet. So that concludes my presentation. The applicant also has a presentation. I'm not sure how that will occur unless we can, yeah, I can't think of anything.
Is it on the hand dryer?
Oh, it's, it's on there.
Well, just treat it as if that was the projector.
You want to try the switch again? Because the light turned red up there. It was yellow before.
Oh, it did? Okay, well.
You see?
Thank you.
Before we invite the applicant up, do we have any questions for staff?
I should give you this.
Does it reach that far?
Keep an eye on it if it goes out.
Oh, okay. Then it reaches that far.
Maru, I,
Yes.
I do have a question. So I was a little confused. I think the staff report and the Fair and Peers study referenced a hundred and fifteen parking spaces.
Yes, I think I forgot to mention that. That is an error. They, when the, the current parking count that is being proposed is one zero eight and not one hundred and fifteen. They did some little, they did some rearranging and reduced it to make the parking garage more workable.
Thank you.
So just for the record, I'd like to make the changes to the staff report and the resolution and the conditions of approval changing hundred and fifteen to hundred and eight.
Thanks. Any other questions for staff? All right, great, we'll invite the applicant up.
Good evening, Chairman Moss and planning commissioners. I feel like I have a rush here to get through this before it turns off again. But I wanted to give you kind of a progress update that's not necessarily directly related to planning, but where we are with this project. We have secured some county home and C D B G money last year, and we've, we applied this year for the boomerang funds that are available. We've applied for the Oakland NOFA, the state's infill and infrastructure grant. And we are going to be applying for the Housing Authority of County of Alameda for twelve units of Section Eight, project base Section Eight, as well as the Federal Home Loan Banks H P program in March. So it's been, it's been very busy, and staff has been working really well with us and moving this along as well, because we're in need of the D D A as well as the entitlements for some of these applications to, to make them happen this year. We've also spoken to a lot of the subcommittees, as well as the neighbors, and we've taken a lot of the feedback from them, you know, in addition to the study session with the planning commission. And I want to highlight just the three key changes since the last time we were up here. So the first one is around the parking. Our current parking count is one oh eight, and we are very adamant about keeping that count as high as possible. In our conversations with the neighbors, they have expressed great concern about not overloading the parking in the immediate, the street parking in the immediate area, where current parking is already very tight. And we believe that we've designed, you know, a very smart way to resolve that issue. We have the lower deck, which is shown here, that's, that has a gate that's about two-thirds into the parking area. So behind that gate are twenty-eight residential stalls. They're reserved for the residents of the property. Upstairs, in the second deck of parking, all of these fifty-seven parking stalls are reserved for either staff or the, or the residents. The tandem stalls there are reserved for staff. So there is slightly less than one-to-one parking. We're planning to unbundle the parking, so we're not, we're not going to assign. And we're going to rely on, I think, the special needs units, the studios and one bedrooms, where we have people with developmental disabilities and/or people with, suffering from AIDS, to, and some other households to not have vehicles. But I think our parking is at eighty-three or so within the residential area. Then downstairs, the, there are twenty-three stalls in the parking area that's open. That's the southeast corner of the parking area in front of you. Five of those stalls are really reserved for particular uses. Three of them are electric vehicle charging stations. So if no residents have electric vehicles, those stalls are going to be empty. And, you know, we're not going to encourage people to park in them unless they have an electric vehicle. So those kind of are set aside. There are two stalls that are for car share. So again, those are not going to be accessible to either the residents or the commercial use. And then, in our feedback from the potential commercial tenants, they did say that parking is very important for them, for their businesses. So we want to make sure there is some parking for that. Now during the nighttime, when the, when the commercial space is essentially closed, those stalls then become open to the residents, and that's how we're going to address some of the, some of the overflow parking. So it's a kind of a dual-use area. We believe the one hundred and eight is absolutely necessary, and we hope that you approve the increased number of parking stalls. This is the, oh, the second major change that you see on this ground floor plan is that the arcade along San Pablo Avenue is now no more. So after some feedback from various departments and, as well as the police, that frontage has been pushed closer to the street. And it's enlarged the interiors slightly for the commercial space and also for our leasing amenity space. And then we'll get to the perspectives where you can see how the street treatment is still very, very elegant and, and human scale. So that leads us to, whoop. Sorry. And this is the kind of updated amenities area where Maru had already referred to the reception area, the clubhouse. The now, the demonstration kitchen, the wall behind the demonstration kitchen connecting to the homework room, which is modular, can be opened. So you can create a larger space that spans the clubhouse with the homework room for larger events. The fitness center has enlarged a little bit, the office. Then there's the two restrooms and the maintenance office. Let's see. Okay. So the third change that you can see here, and we'll come back to that as well, is the outdoor retreat area next to the single-family residence. So now there is a very small piece of lawn that, on, you're on the way to a bocce court that stretches pretty much the entire length of the strip. And then there's some passive landscaping along the fence to screen. And we believe this kind of more passive use is more appropriate for the neighborhood. So those are the three major changes. And then I'll sweep through this. You have this, well, not that fast. You have this in your packet. This is the courtyard level. We have relocated the teen room and the office, the service coordinator office, to the corridor, which leads to the exit from the courtyard. The laundry has also changed because there is now the space for the shaft down to the commercial space for flue in case a restaurant moves in. Why is this changing on me? Okay. All right. Let's see, yeah, okay. So otherwise, things are pretty similar to the last time you saw them. So, these are some perspectives. This is the perspective of the corner of San Pablo and Thirty-seventh. You can see the two vehicular entrances and the ground treatment along the Thirty-seventh Avenue. And then the street frontage with the new commercial space that's pushed out to the sidewalk. This is the perspective on the corner of MacArthur and San Pablo. You can see the slightly taller ground floor space. That's our twenty-foot podium for the two parking decks. On Thirty-seventh. On MacArthur. Oh, the exterior staircase is also new that you see here. That's an egress from the, the Zen Garden on top. This provides fire access directly to our podium deck without going through the interior of the building. It is gated, so that's not publicly accessible. This is the frontage on San Pablo. You see the overlook here, as well as the corridors that pass from one side to the other. We've also done some perspectives relative to the neighborhood. This is an aerial of, well, the southwest corner. An aerial of the northeast corner. And no idea what that is. We've got our elevations. Okay, so these are the interior shots that were requested by the commission. This is the interior shot looking at the east side of the building, where you can see the corridors above. And you see the pass-through down here going into the Zen Garden. This is where the lounge would be. Those are units. This is an area, this is a perspective from the fifth story, looking down at the courtyard. And you can see on the other side the open corridors connecting the two structures, as well as the overlook.
While you're on this page, I have a question regarding this, and it might be kind of nitpicky or something, but the laundry room areas, are they not kind of where the picnic tables or the dining tables are there to the right?
Yes.
Okay, so if you go up to the top, that shows a balcony. Is that not still a laundry room? And does that, is there not a balcony there? Shouldn't that be shown coming up equal to the other windows?
I believe there's enough space in the laundry to make a balcony out of it.
Okay, it didn't show on the floor plans of that laundry that there would be a balcony there?
Probably, well, I would defer to the architects. But, let me, actually, let me go back.
Excuse me, you need to come up to the microphone, please.
So this is, this is the top-story floor plan.
Right.
You're correct. The footprint doesn't show that balcony space right now, but that laundry room is big enough to incorporate a deck off of it.
Oh, cool. So that would have that particular laundry room will have some outdoor space as well. Awesome.
They actually do that on all floors. But, so, so you can see that this is the laundry room, and there are, I believe, four machines in there, and there's plenty of space for utilizing that kind of end there. Oh, that's it. All right, my time's up. So, okay, so the courtyard perspective, and then there are the floor plans. No radical changes there. This is the landscape plan, and you can see in more detail, in color, the very small piece of lawn and the bocce court, the passive use. The landscape plan for the courtyard level. The sky deck. And then the imagery that we've used previously for some of the potential features representative. So I think that's all for our presentation to keep it short. We're, the architects and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Could you go over in a little bit more detail? There was one, I guess it's not a slide anymore, one screen that showed the frontage that is no longer an arcade. And I'm...
On the perspective?
Keep going back a little bit for, there we are. So is there any depth in the fenestration there? It looks sort of like there's an angled...
Yeah, there is. It's, it's slightly deeper by probably, what, three feet or so? Two feet. And then, and then at the base, there's a slight angle there.
And that's concrete down there?
Looks like it.
I just had a couple of questions, or kind of a statement for staff, and then a question for you. So on your unbundled parking, the unbundled part will be just in the twenty-three, twenty-three spaces that are unsecured?
No, the unbundled parking is for the residential parking.
Entire building, okay. So this is where I have a recommendation or a problem or something to recommend to staff is, with the residents being concerned about parking on the street, I live in a building that has over a thousand parking spaces for five hundred and twenty-five units, and people park everywhere but in the garage because it's convenient to park on the street. It's closer to their unit. So to me, I don't have a problem with you having a hundred and eight spaces, but what I think is that as a city, we need to do some kind of management system to our parking or something because those spaces are going to, the streets parking is going to be used before the third floor of the parking structure is, especially if it's not a dated place because everyone's going to grab the prime spaces, and then they're going to go up to the floor. And then by the time they get up to the floor, they're going to say, forget it, I'm going to park on the street. So as a recommendation, I think the city needs to do something about parking management on the street because no matter how many spaces you have in this garage, people are going to take the easy spots on the street before they take anything else.
I think there are a couple of factors in play here that may make this slightly different. Because we have a singular point of entry on the corner of San Pablo and MacArthur, parking on the street is not particularly convenient because you still have to go walk all the way around or walk through the garage in order to get to the entry. There's no, there's no doors fronting the sides. But parking the garage is convenient because you have direct access to the two elevators that go up to the residential units. So it's also protected, gated, and, you know, your shelter from rain, sun. I believe people will use the residential area.
Our garage is the same way, and there's one point of entry into it. And so I, I think, I don't want to make this a condition of approval, but I think as a city, we need to monitor this. And that if it becomes a problem that because these people are parking on the street and taking places when they have plenty inside, we need to mitigate that problem somehow.
And we'll, we'll have a parking management plan when we get closer to actually getting the project financed. But we're happy to work with the city if you want to put any kind of permit parking. We've talked about this with the neighbors as well, that the neighbors would receive the passes for the permit parking that our residents will not.
How about motorcycle parking?
There were, I believe, two, two or four stalls in some of the spaces in the garage that are kind of not quite big enough for a car stall that we've designated for motorcycle.
So just two or four?
Two or four.
For the whole project?
Yes.
Have you found that to be sufficient in your other projects? That ratio?
I don't, we don't have a lot of motorcycles generally in our developments. But I think we can probably look for some more kind of corner pocket spaces.
Yeah, like two thirteen, or that had a little extra by the utility room or something. Yeah, it just seems like as, as it goes, I feel like I see more motorcycles out there just as a way to get around that's inexpensive and reasonable and doesn't take as much space.
Okay. There, there is a strip on the second deck on the north side of the parking where it lines up with the bottom, but there's an extra space because there's no corridor. That could be an area where people can park their motorcycles as well.
Could you talk a little bit about the ground and second-floor parking at the rear of the building? The one that's just got a ten-foot setback from an existing residence? Because that residence on Agar Street, no, Thirty, Thirty-seventh Street, there's a lot of windows along that side, and I'm concerned about whether there's going to be car lights and, you know, intrusion from the garage to that house.
The garage, the, the building itself is closed. There is ventilation, and there are screens, and I think there's a perspective that shows that. But I don't think car lights will go through the building. There, the, the screens are high enough that the car lights should not go through.
Right, from the perspective, it was hard to tell whether, you know, how much visible light was going to be coming through, whether it's light from the garage, you know, interior lighting itself, or light from the headlights. It seemed like that could be a problem for the people living next door.
Okay, I'm not finding the perspective on this one, but... Do we have a shot of this?
You go to the street elevation.
Oh, right. There we go.
Within the street, sorry.
Yeah, this is, this is the facade that would face our neighbors.
It looked like it could be windows, or it could be a screen.
There are screens. Yeah. With metal on it. So we, we'll make sure that at the bumper height, you know, we'll, we'll block that off.
And that there's some kind of screening that will diffuse the light inside the parking garage, too?
Yeah, the parking garage light should be, should be directed inside, not spreading. But I'm also forgetting what the, the fence barrier would be along that edge.
I believe it's just a wood, I believe it's just a wood fence.
Solid?
Yeah, I think it's a solid wood fence now.
So that should help as well, if it's a solid fence.
Two stories to that building, I believe, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's that, there's that ten-foot, ten-foot green space between our garage and the next building.
Right.
And then there's a fence on the, in between the two properties.
I have a question about the corridors. So I noticed on the, the, the bridge between the two sides of the building looks open. So I noticed on the, the, the bridge between the two sides of the building looks open, but there weren't any, I, I didn't see on the floor plan any doorways between that, or any doors shown between that and the hall, you know, what sort of looked like interior hallways? Are those, are those interior space or not?
They are, they would be considered unconditioned space, and they are open to the open air. And that was designed intentionally for fresh air, and for reducing operating costs, and not having to condition it.
In the courtyard renderings and elevations, there, and I guess even the, the, the main, the facade on San Pablo, you can see the, the bridges, I guess, and the balconies that have, appears to be a wood siding, or a wood rail. Can you tell us what the material is for the rails, like there?
I believe that's siding, right? Just that's...
It's wood. Yeah, so where you're actually seeing the open catwalk corridor, we would propose a wood, a wood rail.
A wood?
A wood rail, where you're seeing kind of the wide board slats. And there, of course, would be probably a metal top rail, and then metal vertical pickets that support the horizontal wood members. But the, where you're actually seeing the horizontal slats, that is a wood rail.
Okay. And, and does the, I just want to make sure, I saw the, the photograph of this chessboard play area with chess pieces, and then the rendering is just a checkerboard pattern. Will this actually have chess pieces?
I'm sure it will have chess pieces. I don't know if we'll keep it out all the time, but they'll probably be in the office or the music room if it's not out.
One more question. The, one thing I noticed on the, you know, kind of the cover page rendering, is that there's some, you know, and I realize this is a certain time of day and whatever, but there's some kind of color variation that's shown in the, in the fiber panel, you know, around, on kind of the top level and around the side. And it gives a really kind of nice warmth to the, to the building. I was, and then looking at your material board, it looked like that was all one color fiber panel, is that right?
So the, the, the front image is way back from our original RFQ. That was the rendering from the RFQ from a year and a half ago. So we realized that things have changed in terms of like the, the building configuration and things like that. Like, in that case, the arcade's still there. So, we're going to talk to a contractor to see if we can get some variation on the fiber cement boards at, at the installation. But for now, it's just fiber cement boards, and it may be a uniform color, but we may try to do something there, where we, we pre-paint it a slightly different color before we install.
Okay, thanks.
Do you know if, I mean, I know some manufacturers of the, of the fiber cement lap siding have like a faux wood, where it actually has variation, looks like wood. I mean, do you know if the manufacturer you're looking at provides that option?
There, there's a couple manufacturers that do provide that option, and there's different composite boards and things out there. I think as Felix and his team works through the financing and the, and the budgets, we'll have a better understanding of what material can we, can actually be selected, if that can be upgraded. Right now, on all of our renderings, and on the material board, you're seeing a fiber cement board, because we know that we can actually provide that, and, and we're confident that we can make that look good. So that's why you're seeing that material. But we'll, we'll continue to explore those options.
Also, I mean, I think before, maybe I, maybe it was in there and I wasn't clear on what the windows were, and now I'm realizing they're all vinyl, and I understand the cost, you know, reasons for that. But I'd like to, I mean, do you guys have any kind of sense of the profile, what the manufacturing profile is for those windows? I mean, this is a, it's a pretty, sort of, you know, you're going for a pretty stately industrial sort of approach, and a lot of the vinyl window manufacturers, the profiles are more kind of classic colonial, or some, you know, have a lot of, a lot of shadow lines and things like that, that aren't really represented here, and probably would look strange if that were the case. And I didn't, I didn't know if you had a profile in mind.
Yeah, we're, we're finding more and more with the vinyl window manufacturers, that you can get different frame options, that they have different lines within their, their, their product line, that some are thicker and some are thinner. And you'll notice that we're showing those vinyl windows of color. Still trying to keep them looking very contemporary and modern and urban for this context, that we're not showing a white vinyl window in these renderings or in the board. So the intent with, with showing that dark vinyl is that it, you know, is the same quality as a metal window or any other window that you would see out there. And then we'll work on the sizes, and with, along with our window manufacturer, to make sure that we can provide the sizes that we're showing, and break them up accordingly, and that's kind of to be developed.
Ideally, I, I mean, as the developer, I would prefer to use the Style Line series from Milgard, which is very simple, low-profile, and kind of clean lines. That series may or may not be, be sufficient for the size of windows that we have, and the type of configurations we have. But the next lineup is Monasito, and that one also has very, fairly clean lines. It's a little bit thicker profile.
And these windows open, yes?
Yes.
Where? On, say, on the front San Pablo elevation? It's hard to know.
The side panel?
Is it the little, sort of the narrow side panels?
Yeah, exactly.
Long one?
The, the, yeah, the long, the middle smaller pieces will be open.
And they would...
The big, you know, not, not the fixed pane.
They would open, they would not, it's not a...
It's not, it's not a hung window. We're debating about whether that can be built as a slider. That's my preference, and if not, it would be, have to be casemate.
And are those vinyl windows sufficient for sound attenuation?
Yes.
From San Pablo?
Yeah, so we'll do that study as well. We've put in vinyl that's double paint, that's as high as 34 STC, and if we have to go higher than that, we'll go triple paint on vinyl. And the standard that we put in, I think, is about 28 STC.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will go ahead and open the public hearing for this project. If anyone would like to speak on this project, 3706 San Pablo Avenue, please come forward.
Okay, first I'd like to say that the site is within a general plan identified transit hub. And this transit hubs have been determined, you know, by the city of Emeryville, by the people of the city of Emeryville, to be one of the salient points of a transit hub, is there's projects within that, or housing development within that. Those, those districts are to have less parking. So, market forces being such that they are, who here could guess that our transit hub would be subverted, as, as we've been shown here tonight, is it is being subverted? Who could guess that? And the answer to that question is anybody that pays attention to politics in Emeryville. So, that's kind of cynical. Why have a, why have a transit hub with the provisions that there'd be less parking if you're not going to enforce it? Other than the fact that this is Emeryville. Change the subject now, new, new subject. Maru was talking about the bonus points for this project. As, as a courtesy to the seven of you, the six of you should know that the city council is talking about completely changing the bonus point concept here in Emeryville, because it's thoroughly outdated, and being, essentially being manipulated to our detriment, our being the people of Emeryville's detriment, by developers. And so the city council is talking about completely revamping that. And so you may want to find out about that before you just march blindly ahead with the, the bonus point concept, because that's being, that's being revamped as we speak, as we speak. The retail component of this project, we heard that they hope to include a bunch of stuff that sounds wonderful. Well, that's what we get with every development here, "hope to include." And what we wind up with are mattress stores and formula retail, fast food. I just, I mean, how many times do we have to be fooled before we finally say, "Well, it's going to be what this developer wants to put there, rather than what we want." So I think we should put what we want, insofar as the law allows us to do, and so that would mean, we need to get this in writing. So it might be that the, we ask, ask the developer to, to subsidize the kind of retail that we want, and insofar as the law allows us to do that, why wouldn't we do that? I have more points, but this clock is stopping me.
Good evening. My name's Wright Henry. I'm a resident of Emeryville, and also an architect, who's by virtue of perspective, completed about 3,000 units of multifamily housing, most of which are affordable. I wanted to speak in favor of the project, because I think it's highly competent, competently done, and provides badly-needed affordable housing in Emeryville, and I think, and support in, I speak in support of the concessions. A few points that I wanted to mention. One is, I'm very glad that the arcade from the retail's been eliminated. I think that it's a bad idea to have arcades like that. It makes the retail much more visible from the street, and much more viable as arcade, as retail. I would suggest that the signage for the retail seen on the southwest perspective, for example, the blade sign, that is signs perpendicular to the street, not parallel to the street, are the most important in terms of visibility. And so you, I would suggest the applicant start considering how that corner can really start to make that retail highly visible, because as we all know, retail is very difficult to make viable in these situations. Second point I would make is, I hope that you will require that colored vinyl do be used, because I think the white or beige vinyl is going to really hurt the building, and it is an upcharge. So I think it's important that the black or dark-colored vinyl be used. And the last point is a suggestion coming at a very late point in the design, I, I understand. But that is, if the open roof deck were on the southwest corner, rather than on the southeast corner, perhaps the, what I would suggest is that the roof parapet be the same, that it be opened up. You'd need a glass wall in order to provide the windbreak from the west. But that would make this highly visible on the most visible corner, these coming from the south. It would turn the corner, you'd see it from both the south, as well as from the, from San Pablo. It would allow you incredible view of San Francisco, as well as to the south. And there's five bedrooms in the east corner, and five bedrooms in the west corner, although there's three units in the west corner. So it may be a difficult thing to do, but it could become a, a real icon, or a really strong design statement for the building itself.
My name's Darrell Rush. I own the building straight across the street. And I've been to practically every meeting regarding this building, and been available for all of them. And up till now, is, my understanding was it going to be a 55-foot tall building, and I come here tonight and see it's going to be a 73-foot tall building. Was that, and so, I mean, I would be opposed to that. 55 feet was just fine. That's my, other than that, it's great design, and I was supportive of it. I talked to the developer once a while back. He called and told him I was supportive of it, but not the 73 feet. So, I mean, the points that you're talking about are pretty abstract, and they should be included anyway, regardless of the building height. Just, they're, they're perfectly rational things to do. Anyway, that's my objection to it, though.
Hi, my name is Betty. I live right in the back of the building that they're going to create. I have talked to the developments a lot about certain things that was going to go on, and we have worked together in the neighborhood. But I do have some concerns about the townhouses just going straight across, because that's adjacent of my backyard, and how much privacy are they going to be able to look down now, since it's done went up another couple of feet? Because it did start off at five feet. And another concern is, I have a sign right there that's on my yard, that I'm not, I'm not in, it's owned by Clear Channel, but it's in my yard. So if they build the townhouses on top, how is that going to interfere there? And my other concern is the writing on the building. What are they going to do about that? And the retail, because on that street that they're talking about, that parking, the street sweeper sweeps it every morning at 3:00 a.m. So, I don't think they can park there anyway, because the street people sweep at 3:00 a.m. in the morning, so. And where's the garbage going to be at, too? Because my house faces all this stuff. I don't want to smell garbage either.
Anyone else would like to speak on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Wait, oh, sorry. We will not quite close the public hearing yet.
Hi, my name is Nick Nikotaris. My dad owns the Bank Club Building on 39th and San Pablo. So parking has definitely become a challenge, so more parking is definitely better. For the community, my question is, will the parking still remain on San Pablo for commercial use, the street parking, in front of this building on San Pablo? Does anybody have a answer to that question?
Would you like us to respond, Chair Moss?
Sure.
I believe the on-strike parking will remain, is that correct?
Yeah, that was my only question, but definitely, more parking is definitely better. So, that's it. That's my question.
Any other speakers? Would the applicant like to respond to anything before we close the public hearing?
Hi.
You can click the, the screen again if you want.
So, for, in terms of the, the retail, sir, we're not underwriting the commercial space. This is a nonprofit development. We're not underwriting it for lending purposes, and we're going to work with the city to choose the tenant of your choice that's really going to benefit the neighborhood. We have that liberty, and I would like to exercise that. We're looking at, you know, nonprofits, or, you know, our first, our first conversation was with Habitat, which is a children's museum, but they want some outdoor space, and it didn't work for them. But that's kind of the line of thinking that we're going on. In terms of the sky deck location, we chose the southeast corner, partly because it was a, it was a good design feature for our neighbor to the east. Their home is, you know, if you look at the, let's see. So, their home is right here, 10 feet away from our building, and it's a two-story structure. So at this point, with the reduced height, they, their sunlight will be a little bit better than, than had we gone with the six stories there. In terms of the height, the top of the building, I, I believe is at 60, 65, is that right? 65 feet or so? And that has been that way since before, well, since the last study session, it's been that way. The 73 is the top of the elevator tower, which is a protrusion from the roof. The sky deck is one story lower, so that's at somewhere under 60. But that's, that's kind of how this mathing ended up, but we'll talk a little bit more about that. The townhouses, let's see, where am I? The townhouses are on the ground floor, so they're, they're right here along the, facing MacArthur. And so the, this, this, this didn't change since the last time. It's still, it's capped off at the top of the townhouse on the, on the left there. That's where the Zen Garden is, it's two stories up. So if they look out, they will see the roof of the house next door, and then it goes from there. And then it goes from there. The rest of the units are here, set back another 20 feet. The garbage is on 37th. And it is situated between the two vehicular entries so that that's the, that's where the garbage is located and where it will be picked up. There's a chute that goes up the four stories where people would drop their garbage and recycling. So I think those are the points I want, please want to, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and we will bring this back for discussion. Mr. Gunkel, you want to get us started?
Sure. Thank you. So, yeah, I guess some of my questions sort of lead to comments. I do, I do feel like the, the main, the front rendering with the, I don't know if at the time you were thinking of an E-Pay rain screen or something along those lines, but it definitely has a richness that's lost when using the pre-finished cementitious siding. And so I'd like to see something brought back that at least gives that level of character. I, again, with the vinyl windows, I mean, it sounds like you're on the right track, but it, you know, maybe it could be a condition of approval that the vinyl windows, when they're decide, you know, once a decision's made, that they're submitted to the staff for review. Primarily that they are, are of a design that, that still feels of, I mean, while being vinyl is of, you know, still feels of quality and, and doesn't have too many shadow lines where it sort of circumvents the, the rest of the aesthetic approach of the building. When I look at, there's not really a roof plan, but there is a aerial sort of rendering. And I see in that that a lot, like initially I was looking at the elevations and I would see that the different, what looked like a mass in one elevation, then I'd look at a courtyard and I'd see that it wasn't carried through. And that made me, you know, realize, looking at the aerial rendering, that a lot of these are just parapets that you're pulling back a little bit to give the impression of a mass or a volume. And I think it's key that the, if you're, if that's the approach and you can't get them to line up from courtyard out to the, out to the facades, that they be brought back far enough that there's no risk of what we see all over the place, especially in like strip malls where they only take it back a few feet and you can see from the street that it's just a fake, fake volume. I'm still seeing in the courtyard, well, a couple of things with the courtyard. I mean, starting to see, now that we can see the renderings of the courtyard, it seems like a lot of the attention to detail that was placed in the facade treatments on the four, you know, the four primary facades, didn't really carry into the courtyard. And it's really, it becomes pretty, you know, a stark, an obvious like stark difference where you can see the small portions at the east and west ends where the materials from the exterior facades are carried in and then where they meet the rest of the courtyard, which is basically all plaster and just starts to feel a little bit more kind of office park like and cold. And I've been, I mean, we, we did some field trips to some affordable housing developments. And there were definitely some that we saw where the courtyards were not treated well and, and felt cold and no one utilized them. And it's really going to be key. I mean, the court, as much as we care about the streets and how this engages the streets and the neighborhood, we also care about how this is going to be, you know, a vital place for the residents of the, of the building. And so, you know, if, and that, that's not just in the uses and the amenities that are placed in those courtyards, but also how that courtyard's treated. And so I'd really like to see some of the higher quality materials that you're utilizing elsewhere in the building brought into the courtyard, at least in some accents or something along those lines that start to give it a little bit more warmth than it currently seems to have. And I, the one comment about the, what is it, the sky deck, and I guess what I always saw, when I saw the renderings of the, of the San Pablo elevation and you've got that, that cut through the building right at the middle with the, the lights hanging over it and it feels like this great place where people walking down the street will feel, you know, get a sense of the life that's happening inside the building. I kind of, I guess I always imagined that would be this sort of hub, the adult hub. I think the last time you sort of presented the, the primary courtyard as the, you know, family-friendly area with kids, you know, play structures, et cetera, and this would be more adult lounge. But then when I'm actually looking at the landscape plans, I'm seeing a focal element. And then when I look at the photos of what a focal element is, it's like an art piece that's lit up. And then there's a handful of couches and, and tables and chairs around. Whereas the sky lounge has your fire pit and your barbecue, your outdoor kitchen, all those kinds of things. All the things that I guess I was envisioning happening at that, at that adult lounge. And I, I guess I, my concern is, as cute as you make the adult lounge look, if there's nothing really to draw anyone to it, it's going to end up becoming a place where, you know, people go to talk on the cell phone or work on their laptop and it's not going to be this, this sort of introduction of life carried from the courtyard and the, and the building out to the street. So in a lot of ways, I'd love to see that, that adult lounge become more of what the sky, the sky lounge or whatever it's called is. And, you know, I, I don't know. I think a lot of times we put a lot of emphasis on roof decks and, and at the expense of courtyards. And, I mean, the, all these people's houses are facing the courtyard, or a lot of them are facing the courtyards. They're going to see the courtyard all the time. They're rarely going to see the roof deck. And so, and the street doesn't see the roof deck. The street sees the courtyard. The street sees the adult lounge. So they, really putting the, putting the emphasis on charging those spaces and making those the space, you know, those the spaces that people are going to use seems more important to me. And then just making sure the chessboard has pieces so it's not just a checkerboard painted on the ground. And, and, yeah, I guess, I mean, the one thing that we, we mentioned last time that I didn't, I didn't really see any changes to, and I know it's probably difficult to make it work, but that lobby on the first floor is still, you know, the elevator and stairs are still offset, you know, pretty far back from the main lobby, making me think that most people probably won't enter through the lobby or at least a lot of people would end up just walking down the street, the side street instead and going in that side door. So that corner lobby, I sort of, I start to wonder kind of what it is. You know, are there, are the mailboxes in there? I don't, I don't know what, you know, it'd be nice to, if you can't make it work with the elevator and the stair coming down at that corner, at least making it work where there's something in that lobby that draws people into that space.
Well, I agree with your comments about the courtyard, enhancing the facades around the courtyard so that there's a little bit more accent and a little bit more visual interest and warmth to it would be great. My, making the adult lounge in the front more usable as a place that people would actually want to go is also important. And one of my, one of my issues is always with the infiltration planters. If there's some way to sink them or do something so that they're not these concrete things that are four feet high that really just take up space, don't add an amenity, they're too high to be seat walls and sit on, they're too high to really interact with, and they just impinge on the space in the courtyard. So if there's a way to reduce the height of those, that would be great. And again, I just want to, want you to really pay attention to that rear facade of shielding the, you know, the, the interaction between the existing residents back there in the parking garage, whether, really careful treatment of the screens and of the lighting so that that doesn't become a problem, the lighting and the noise, because noise from a garage is also an unpleasant thing to have. That house is two stories with windows all along the side and their setback from the property line is pretty small. You might want to think of something other than those trees that are planted along there. Maybe some clumping bamboo would work better just in that narrow space to give some more of a screening effect and something that softens that side of the building because it's a pretty hard exterior on that side. Otherwise, I think that it's quite an attractive building. I think the spaces are thoughtfully put together. And I think that the parking, you know, the, going down to 25% of required parking just seems excessive when you're dealing with families that need to get kids around and things like that. So I'm perfectly fine with the 108 parking spaces.
Well, I think that they've met most of the conditions that we asked for. We've studied this many times. I do agree that it would be nice if the interior, I mean, the exterior finish in the interior courtyard was a little richer and also the finish on the outside. And other than that, I think it's very good. I think the entry lobby is primarily for outside visitors and that the side lobby would be used by people who live there because the post office box, I mean, the post, mailboxes are right next to that side lobby also. That side lobby is next to the garage and I think that's where most people will be coming from. Other than that, I think it's a great project and sort of thing we need here in Emeryville.
Well, I echo the other commissioners' comments and agree with them, especially the courtyard. It was also looking a little severe to me and the planters, I'm not sure why they're always four foot, do you? Is it to get the volume of water?
Yeah.
It's a bummer. If there's a seat wall, it could be made or something that, because, yeah, just not at human scale and the, some of the materials and the, the level of detail on the inner courtyard doesn't quite feel friendly. And I also agree about the leasing office in general. I love this project. I'm really, really excited about it and I think you've done a wonderful job. So, thank you. And maybe some motorcycle parking. Oh, and also, I thought, I thought the one resident architect did have a point. I assume you're using a dark colored vinyl window. Is that, that would be, if it would need to be a requirement, you know, like a condition of approval, I would want to have that happen.
Well, I think you guys have done a fantastic job. I still love this project. I think you're really doing a great job answering a lot of needs in a very small space. I'm just absolutely impressed that you can do nine floor plans in a space like this. And to me, we're looking at 30 units that are three-bedroom or above. That's more than, that's 34% of this project. That's more than a third. I think that's family-friendly and I think it's affordable. And with that, I think if you're looking at families in this home, parents are going to need to take their children places. They can't always use buses, although that's what we prefer. So to me, the parking, because of the amount of large family-friendly units that we're putting in this development, I think the parking is justified and I definitely support the 108 units. I'm just concerned about the unbundling and what that might causes the street problems. So I think we need to just stay cognizant of that. I guess I see the adult lounge in the courtyard a little different than, than the rest of my commissioners. As a person without children, I see this maybe as a place to go to get away. I see this as, it does activate the street. It does make it look very festive. To me, this could be where two parents could come and sit while their children are playing in the, in the court, in the main family area courtyard and yet they can sit and have a little bit of quiet and have a conversation of their own, maybe go have a glass of wine or something. And I like the sky deck where it is. I think that's the place because as a person who lives in a multi-unit building, when people have parties and things like that where they're barbecuing, I don't know that I want that right under my window if I'm the person that's living there. So having it up on the upper deck where it's away from other people and all these parties and things are happening, I think it's a, it's kind of, and it makes the party a little bit more private as well. So I think they've really looked at everything. And, you know, for someone who's not going to live in this product, I think it's something that's very attractive. So with that, I think it's just a really good project. And I think what the neighbors desires for more parking and their concern for losing street parking, I think the 108 is perfectly fine.
I also think this is a fantastic project. And, yeah, it just, it looks really good. And I want to, I want to thank the applicant. I know that we've, we've requested already a couple of big-ticket items that you've included such as the venting the, the restaurant space all the way up and including the, you know, 10 years worth of transit passes. And, you know, I, I know, I really appreciate you providing that. I know in projects such as this that that is something, you know, as an affordable, as a nonprofit affordable housing developer, that that is something that can really impact your project financing. So I really appreciate that you've, have included those things. I want to also, I want to kind of echo past comments regarding, one regarding the fiber panel. I would really like to see some color variation in that, if there's any way to do that. I think that that's, that's really kind of a key material on the, the front elevation especially. And that it's, it's one that I, that I definitely wouldn't want to see value engineered in such a way that it, that it affected the, that elevation. So that is one thing I would like to see. And then also, I'm also supportive of the, doing something to kind of improve the courtyard elevations a little bit. So maybe we can kind of think about how we might fashion some conditions of approval to address those, those concerns. I think that's most of my comments. I do have one question of staff that I forgot to ask before. I'm really dying to know actually on, on projects like this that are, that straddle the border of the two cities, how, how do we determine which units are in each city for the purposes of tax collection and voting and such? I mean, I, I see even on these, even on these floor plans, there's, you know, there's a unit where the, the city limits kind of run right through the front door. So I was kind of curious.
Well, I don't know, is the honest answer. But clearly if a unit is 100% in one city or the other, then that's the city it's in. The, I think the general rule is that whatever city the majority of the unit is in is the city it's considered to be in.
Wouldn't the street address of the building?
Well...
And that, too?
No, not necessarily. For example, for the prod, for the units that are all or mostly in Oakland, we are, we are collecting the Oakland Unified School District school fee and sending that on to the city of Oakland. And for the units that are all or mostly in Emeryville, we're collecting the Emory Unified School District fee. And that's the school district that those units are considered to be in. We do have a memorandum of understanding with Oakland on this project that has been approved by their city council and our city manager. And that stipulates things like fire and police services, that Emeryville will provide fire and police services to the entire building. So you don't have to worry when you dial 911, you know, which department is, which city's going to show up. But as far as voting and school, I believe it's whatever you, city all or most of the unit is physically in.
All right, thanks. So with that, does, would anyone like to make a motion? Does anyone have thoughts on conditions of approval or?
I had thoughts on that, improving the courtyard elevation. I think that this applicant has shown responsiveness to our request. And I'm not sure, but maybe staff is understanding what we're requesting in terms of a little bit more, what's the word, sort of that?
Warmth.
Warmth and, and friendliness at the level of detail in terms of the...
The finish, sort of the...
Yeah. And, and also the filtration planters, making them a little bit more pedestrian scale or, you know, human scale. And I'm wondering if, if staff feels comfortable in working with the applicant to make those changes so we can move this forward. I just don't...
Yeah, I think so. I mean, you're, you're talking, if I understand correctly, you're talking about the interior elevations?
Yes.
Facing the courtyard?
Yeah.
Yes.
That look kind of industrial park-like, yes.
So you're looking for different colors and materials?
Greater warmth.
Upgrade overall. Upgrade overall.
Colors and materials of greater warmth on the interior elevations facing the courtyards. Okay.
Now, can, can we change the filtration planters? I was understanding from then that that was a code requirement, is that? So, I mean...
Well, one can create impossible...
Does the applicant want to respond to that?
...options to make them more...
Are they on the deck? Is that it?
We'll work with the civil engineer and the landscape architect on that. My understanding from them is that the civil space, civil has to meet C3 requirements, which requires a certain height for the water, the stormwater, to go through before it enters a drain. So we'll see what they can do. But my first thought was that we can, on the side of the, the planter, we would step it out for a seat.
Right.
Just to kind of add a little bit of a, kind of a depth to it, so it's not like a vertical, flat face.
Just as long as that doesn't impede in any kind of walkway or anything, because that would be in addition to what we're showing already, right?
It would eat into the courtyard slightly, but I think it's on the periphery, so it should be okay. And we can kind of, you know, space some stretches of...
Doesn't have to be all the way.
Yeah, some flat spaces and maybe some, some planters that are not stormwater planters, that are just regular planters in between. So that kind of adds a little, a step to it, if you will.
Yeah, that would be good.
So do we feel that we need to add conditions of approval, or do we feel that the developers...
Well, I think it would be helpful. I've got a couple noted down here. Did you want to say anything about the cement board on the outside?
The variation in the front facade?
Yeah. I mean, is there a way to make that, make a condition of approval that the fiber cement lap siding have a variation in color similar to that of natural wood?
I think you just said it.
That's almost exactly what I was going to say.
Sounds good.
And also that the vinyl windows be reviewed by staff.
And with those conditions, I would motion, make a motion that we approve the project.
With the variations?
With all those conditions that we just stated.
I'll, I'll restate.
I'll second.
Is it, I mean, even if we don't put a fire pit or, I mean, even if, I mean, is there a way to bring a little bit more? I just worry about that, that front entry, that, that sliver, that adult lounge, if it's all staring at some sculpture and there's just some people around it. I hear what you're saying, Stephen, but I still think it, it's not living up to its potential. It looks like such an exciting space from the outside. I'd actually love to see a condition of approval that there, there be lights strung over it, like in the rendering. But, but a fire pit or something out there that will actually make it a space that people, I mean, you'd be surprised at what a fire, like, people will gather around a fire pit.
And some twinkly lights.
Yeah.
So would you guys have a problem with putting in a fire pit rather than the artwork?
I actually don't think we have a fire pit anywhere in the development.
There's one called out on a deck.
Is it barbecue or?
I think it's in the zen garden.
Oh, yeah, the fire.
It's a zen fire pit.
Yeah, it's in the, that's right.
Maybe we could move it then.
Fire feature.
A fire feature?
Yes.
Maybe we could...
You weren't aware of that and the liability that involves?
There's a fire feature in the zen garden. So would you oppose to them moving that to the front adult lounge instead?
I wouldn't oppose to it, but, I mean, I was, I was personally opposed to having a fire feature for environmental reasons, but I think, you know, as an activation, as a space activator, we'll, I mean, I'm open to having a conversation with our landscape architect to try and activate that space. We may come up with an equivalent to a fire pit, if that's okay, but something, something other than a sculpture.
Yeah, so, I mean, something that is a proven means of bringing people together to a space. And maybe, again, a condition of approval that, that, that the focal element for the adult lounge be reviewed with staff.
I would support that as well, yeah, to add as a condition of approval.
Can you please repeat that?
I got it.
That the focal element at the adult lounge be reviewed with staff with the, with the intention being that it be a, I don't know, a place, something that, that brings people to that area.
A draw to the space.
A draw to the space.
And I would add that to my motion.
Well, if, if we're adding these things, I would like to also ensure that there's adequate screening on the rear of the, rear of the building adjacent to the existing residence that faces, that the sides onto the building.
Say that again?
That staff ensure that there's adequate screening between the parking garage and the adjacent residence that has windows looking in that direction.
The residence on the east side.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and for clarification, you're talking about the overlook, not the lounge, which is in the back, correct? The adult...
Well, they, they call it adult lounge on the landscape drawings. It's the, the one that's on the overlook.
On San Pablo.
Oh, okay.
So my motion would include all of those conditions?
Okay. Would you like me to restate what I've got?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, I've got, and this is pretty much all thing, design revisions to be reviewed and approved by the director, right? That the vinyl windows be a dark color, that the colors and materials on the interior elevations of the courtyard be of greater warmth, that, let's see, that the fiberboard lap siding have variations in color similar to wood. Is that right? Variations in color similar to wood. That the filtration planters in the courtyard be made lower if feasible and/or seats added to their edges and/or new planters be added that are not C3, that can be lower. That a focal element be added to the adult lounge and be reviewed by staff, and with the idea being that it's something that draws people to the space, and that there be adequate screening between the parking garage and the adjacent residence where there are windows.
And there is additional motorcycle moped parking.
I didn't hear that one.
I just added it.
It was heard. It's on my list.
Additional, how much?
Twice as much. There's not, there's none now, or is there two or four?
There's two, I believe.
There's two. How about eight? Is that too many? That seems...
Well, you might have to lose a parking place to do that.
There's four per parking place, correct?
I don't know.
Well, I don't know how the applicant feels about this, but in terms of our code, you can substitute four motorcycle spaces for one car space. So it counts towards your requirement.
So then we'd have six. Six would be, take one space?
Okay.
I would add that to my motion.
All right. I, I have a clarifying question on the vinyl windows. I want to ask if the color can be on the visible sides of the building. And in the interior courtyard, can I still use white vinyl where it's not visible?
I, I, I thought you were going to ask that question.
I have, I have to protect my budget.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, personally, I'm, I'm okay with that as long as it's kind of consistent with, I mean, we, we were asking for changes to the elevations. I think as long as it's consistent with the colors and materials that you're still going to have in the revised elevations.
And that the profile is, and that the profile is contemporary, as Commissioner Gunkel was stating.
I don't know. I mean, it's like the courtyard's already needs, needs some work, and then introduce that in where all of a sudden you're using the white vinyl windows that everyone just sort of inherently associates with kind of cutting corners or being... I don't, I don't know.
We're also looking at a nonprofit affordable housing and trying to make this happen.
I mean, I guess maybe the key then is really making it work with whatever you're bringing into the courtyard. So, so if you're bringing new, some, you know, whatever you're trying, material-wise and approach-wise, you're utilizing to, to bring some warmth to the courtyard, that somehow you're doing, you're, you're doing that with the windows as well.
Okay.
Is it really that much of a cost difference for the...
It's, uh, last time I looked, I think it was a 15% add.
And that's anything other than white?
Yeah.
So why don't we say something to the effect of the, the interior, the courtyard-facing windows shall be vinyl consistent with the aesthetic of the courtyard elevations? So acceptable to...
And maybe white, I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Right? Provided it's consistent.
Yes, yes, got that.
And we'll, of course, wrap it around the brick veneer, you know, where, where it's brick.
Okay.
I second.
Oh, that's right. Did we have a second? Yeah, you just seconded it?
Well, she, I, Ted...
On my original, Sean seconded, but I've amended it with each of these amendments. I have made the motion, so whether Sean wants to second it or...
Whatever, yeah. I don't, whatever we need to do.
If, if the amendments are agreeable to the seconder, then the seconder doesn't change, I think, is how it works.
It'll be myself and Sean.
Okay. All right, I think we've got it. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Chair Moss?
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Break here. Next one's going to be a long time. Break with me. Okay, all right, we, we'll take a...
Thank you, guys.
Quick, five-minute break and reconvene. First of which is, well, they're all are the Marketplace Redevelopment Project, but the first of which is Parcells B and C.
Which is where I have to recuse myself, so I'll rejoin you after this.
Thanks.
I mean, you get to talk for three minutes.
Okay, so before I get right into the project, I'd like to make some general housekeeping comments for this project and the two items that are going to be following. For all three items, we've got a couple of studies that have been commissioned. One is the traffic study for all three items. And we also have a design consultant, Arnold Mar Morella, who is working with, with us to review the design. In particular, he is, he will be focusing not only in the general design, but also ensuring that the units, the unit designs are family-friendly, and this is for all three units. The other general comment I would like to make is that I'm going to be extremely brief. I'm going to let the applicant kind of go through the project because it's, these are study sessions, they are evolving, they might be showing new slides, which are a little bit different from what you have in your packet. So in the interests of time and efficiency to see how we can move this along, I'm just going to focus on things that concern staff and that what we want you to kind of keep in mind as we go down.
So Miru, who did you say is doing the design review?
Arnold Mar Morella, and he is present here. He's going to be listening to your comments, and he is available for any questions if you were to have.
Thank you.
So...
By way of introduction, I believe he's spoken to you previously, but Arnold was the consultant who helped us with the design of the, most recently, the ME project, which is right next to this site, actually, part of this site, and also the Parkside, Park on Powell project.
So for all, again, a general comment, you have, at this point, seen several study sessions, and all the study sessions that are on today at different points of time. You have also in December saw an overview of the master plan where the focus is on the streets, on the general circulation, and how different public areas worked with each other. This set of study sessions, we would like you to focus on the buildings themselves, their design, the unit mixes, the landscaping. So, so with that in mind, just to refresh your mind, the first will be, that, that we are going to be talking about is Building B and Building C, and the realignment of Shell Mount Street. So the current proposal for Parcells B and C. The Parcel B, the last time you saw this was about almost a year ago, and that has not changed. It is a four-level, about a little over 500-space parking garage with 25,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. Parcel C has changed a little bit, not the commercial site. It is still about 30,000 square feet of grocery store, and in addition, 2,300 square feet of retail. They have now introduced, and you saw that in the December study session, residential units that wrap around, wrap around two portions of the grocery store and go up. And the realignment of Shell Mount Street is more or less the way it was. It has moved along a little bit, but it's more for the details in terms of stormwater treatment and things like that. So these are the Parcel B elevations, this is the Shell Mount elevation, and this is the Railroad elevation. Parcel C, this is kind of a rendering of Parcel C from the aerial view, and what I would like you to focus on is where the loading is going to occur. Staff prefers, at the December Planning Commission, you saw the applicant preferred loading, which was occurring right here on, off Shell Mount, and the vehicle entry would be along 63rd Street. That, that configuration of loading on Shell Mount is, was, is not acceptable to our Public Works Director. There was a lot of brainstorming done in terms of alternative to that. And between the Public Works Director, our design consultant, as well as our traffic consultant, all three agree that the preferred, the staff-preferred location for loading would occur off, off the 63rd Street at the same, and this would also be the entry to the garage as well. The Public Works Director is here. If you would like, if you have any questions for him, he does feel very strongly on this Just to recall of the previous study sessions, a year ago, December 12th, 2013, there were certain comments that were made, which have been addressed. Just as a reminder, you had asked that the bike lanes be retained on Shell Mount instead of sharrows. Parklets have been removed now, which, as you felt, it were not appropriate for this site. You also suggested that the garage facade needed to be broken up, and the vest elevation needed more work. There was a suggestion to look for non-retail commercial tenants in addition to retail tenants for the ground-floor commercial areas. There was also a concern regarding the operation of the grocery store and the circulation, including loading. At the last month's study session, the commission liked the sighting of the residential units, that's the new feature. There was concern, again, over the loading, and the commission requested more information regarding the time and the frequency of how the truck delivery would work for the grocery store. In terms of staff comments, I've already talked about our preferred loading area. There was also concern for, regarding adequacy and location of bike parking for employees and grocery store patrons. There was also a concern regarding the design of the parking garage, particularly the elevation facing the railroad, the east, which is the east elevation. We felt that, that that elevation needed to interact with the approved but unbuilt Emory Station West or the Transit Center, as this facade will be highly visible from the Transit Center and the, and also the Amtrak station and the pedestrian bridge. At the minimum, staff feels that the design treatment is necess, some kind of design treatment to ensure that the parked cars are not visible from the public rights way. It was noted that a master sign program would be needed for the commercial space on Parcel B, which is also a condition of approval of the original PUD. It was noted that there were no details. We have nev, we have yet to see any details of Parcel F. Parcel F, if you, if I go back, is at the corner of, this is the Parcel F, at the corner of Shell Mount Way and Shell Mount Street. We felt that we, it was necessary to get some plans for the Parcel F, because it may be forgotten and never actually get built. And we suggest that a requirement be made that the FTP for the, this Parcel F building be submitted, and that construction undertaken within certain periods, that can be determined as part of the FTP approval for Parcel B, Parcel C, and/or Shell Mount Street alignment. So issues to be considered is to give us direction regarding the design of the garage and the retail building, same thing for the design for Parcel C, as well as your preferred location of the loading dock, and your, in terms of unit mix for Parcel C... location of the loading dock, and your, in terms of unit mix for Parcel C, as you'll hear, they have two options for the unit mix. One option has more and smaller units, and the other option has less and bigger units. I'm sure the answer to that question is pretty straightforward, and, and whether the commission agrees with the suggestion to include Parcel F as part of the FTP approval for Parcel B, C, and, and/or Shellmount Street realignment. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, otherwise, we can hear from the applicant on, on their presentation.
I would like to hear about the rationale about moving the loading.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Kaufman to come and talk about that.
Do you need the graphic?
I think I'm fine. Sean, Commissioner Moss, members of the commission, there's several reasons why I've been really pushing to relocate the loading dock to a side street as opposed to having it on our busiest arterial, one of our busiest arterials in the city. In particular, safety, for one. As you know, Shellmount Street is a bike, has bike lanes on it, and it's heavily used by cyclists, and the idea of having a truck, having to stop, and then back up into those spaces on a main arterial would be problematic for the many cyclists that, that run through that corridor. Secondly, it's heavily, there's a heavy volume of traffic on that street, and for a truck to try to maneuver back into those spaces will take a considerable amount of time, and will end up in a lot of vehicle queues along the street, even during light traffic. And on those times when vehicles are waiting for the truck to back in, some of them that would be heading in the southbound direction would probably detour onto 63rd Street and then over to Christie Avenue to try to avoid the congestion that the truck would be creating. Third is, the city really needs to be able to control the street. We used to have a lot of loading docks throughout the city, it was an industrial city, and we used to have a lot of backups on Hollis Street. For example, we had trucks backing into the West Vaco Warehouse. More recently, on Shellmount Street, the warehouse where Sherwin-Williams used to sell their paint, right next to the Powell Street Bridge, used to have a loading dock, and trucks used to back in over there, and it used to create gridlock. Now, when we have just one car trying to make a left turn during peak hour, and, and they don't have the gap in traffic, you have major queues on the street. So not only is it's a safety issue, but it's also an issue for traffic. And then, and then lastly, it's very difficult to control, once it's approved, it's very difficult to, to control when those trucks would arrive. Right now, we have a loading, a loading problem on the street, which we can't control. You have UPS trucks delivering for the businesses there, there's no place for those UPS trucks to stop, so they stop in the bike lane, and then I get the calls about, what can we do to make it safer for the cyclists? So I can only imagine, if you had trucks backing in and creating a safety issue, there'd be a lot of concern from, from the public, so.
Thank you.
Chair Moss, I'd just like to add one other point to what the Public Works Director said, and that is that in our planning regulations, there is a provision in the section on loading that says that a truck shall not maneuver on a transit street, as indicated in the general plan, to access a loading area. If the loading area is off of a transit street, then any maneuvering that's required is supposed to be done off the street. You have to have enough room in your loading area to be able to pull the truck straight in and then maneuver it back into the loading dock off the street. That same requirement doesn't apply to streets that aren't transit streets. Shellmount Street is a transit street. 63rd and Little Market Drive there, those are not transit streets. So maneuvering on the street there would be permitted under the planning regulations, but maneuvering on Shellmount Street is not permitted under the planning regulations.
Thank you. All right, with that, I guess we will invite the applicant up, unless, are there any additional questions of staff first, actually? All right, then we will invite the applicant up.
And as soon as the little light changes, I'll get your screen going.
All right, well, I can start. My name is Mark Stefan. I'm the president of City Center Realty Partners, the owner developer of Public Market. As you know, we've been working with the community, the staff, and the commission for the last 18 months. We think it's been a good process that has helped us evolve this project into something that will be a real contribution to the community. We're going to try to move this along quickly, because there's a lot that you have to review tonight. I just wanted to address two items that Maru brought up, just to give it a backdrop as you're looking at the rest of the project. One of them, she mentioned the parking structure and the facade treatments on that parking structure. We've, we've heard the concerns over the last 18 months, we've been working with staff to address that, and what you'll see tonight is a result of those conversations with staff, and so, take a look at that, and we're, we would like to have a dialogue with regard to that as we go forward tonight. The other issue is Parcel F, that building is about 3,500 feet roughly. We are happy to have a design, show you a design, we've worked up some sketches, we're happy to have that and get approved, but in terms of when that gets built, we have some existing lease issues that dictate certain park, parking requirements, where parking has to be, and until we solve that with two particular tenants, we can't build that building. So I just wanted that to be known. So to move forward now, I'd like to ask our architect, Aaron Ashley, to come up and, and give you our presentation. Thanks.
It gets green now.
Yeah, it's on.
Oh, it's on.
Great.
You have to talk fast before it goes off again.
Good evening. For our monthly visit together, I, without belaboring anything, you know, we've seen each other a lot lately, and even though, I guess technically this is the second study session, you've seen every element of this at each other's study session. So in addition to Mark and myself, Zabe Bent of Nelson Nygaard's here, if there are specific issues or questions about transit, some traffic, some parking, and bike lanes. Tonight, we wanted to just quickly review what we discussed together in December, focus on the Shellmount Street realignment, Parcel B and Parcel C. I'll kind of leave it up to you, if you'd like to break it into parts, happy to do that, if you want me to kind of run through everything and then come back, so you, you tell us. And then, and then afterwards, our other team has Parcells A and D to review with you. So just, again, kind of in terms of timeline, obviously TMG got started on this quite a while ago, and this has kind of been in the works for a long time, especially the, the Shellmount parcel, that'll be talked about, Parcel A. For our purposes, we, I think, we were here last December of 2013 to talk about the road realignment and the parking garage, and, and the grocery store in a, in a different shape. Our hope is to build the grocery store and the street, start construction this year, and so we're hoping that over the course of the next however many weeks, we mutually agree on everything, and everything goes swimmingly. We also hope to be back in front of you very shortly with the, kind of updates to the park, in hopes that we could kind of move forward the park as well. So again, you know, the site as it is today, with the Essex Building almost finished on 64th and Christie, the various parcels that we're proposing, and generally how they lay over the existing land, the plan we reviewed with you in December, effectively at the master plan level, we've, we've changed nothing except that we've looked at options for deliveries to the grocery store, and we extended conversations about transit and traffic to meet with AC Transit, and meet with Emery Go-Around, and I'll report back on some of those conclusions. So again, it seemed to us that in, in light of market changes and approvals that were made by the City Council previously, that, that you all seemed to agree with the direction we were going, which was great for us in terms of a master plan, really lets us dig into the details of the architecture with a little bit more confidence. In terms of phasing, as we've said before, there's a grocery tenant who's, who's very exciting, very interesting, who Mark and his team are getting very close to finalizing a deal with, and they're very eager to be here soon. And in order to do that, we think we need to get the road built first, or concurrently, but obviously, road opened immediately, and begin construction on Parcel C, at least the garage portion of it, understanding that we might come back later and wrap the residential around it. We intend to complete Christie Park before any of the residential buildings are finished, so I list that as part, part two here. And then Phase Three, to really finish the site, and there may be kind of timing issues to availability of parking and managing construction on-site in the exact order. Just, again, kind of a quick recap, so if you are on Shellmount Street, crossing Shellmount Way in front of the Hyatt, that's the Parcel F, retail restaurant on the corner, Urban Outfitters in the distance. A quick preview of what will be presented tonight for Parcel A, the grand stair that we talked about. Coming up and making the bend onto the new portion of Shellmount with the parking garage there on the right and the proposed stoplights in place. The character of Shellmount Street now that it would become a two-sided main street with retail on the, on the base, on the ground-floor level of this parking garage. This new grocery tenant as the anchor tenant of a building that has parking above and residential wrapping the back. Another look at that garage and kind of back south on Shellmount. And if you walk out of the alley of the Marketplace today and look north, you'd, you'd see this grocery store. In fact, it, it has food offerings and purveyors that they're interested in participating in the kind of market, public market food court, and so they would be the terminus of the alley. And then a, a character study of, of the residential wrapper of the garage, this would be on 63rd Street, looking towards PPP. And a quick preview of, of the updates to the residential building on Parcel D. And lastly, you know, this, this latest park plan reflects some of the updates that came out of our discussions with you in October, or September, October, and we, we hope to see you again soon on that, and just kind of, I'll end with a character study looking at Christie Park. So that's most of what we talked about in December, and I guess now we wanted to dig into some specifics, even though you've, you've kind of gotten a hint of everything. Starting with the street, and realizing that there's a ton of complexity from a civil engineering, public works, utilities, that I'm not going to get into, we can certainly talk about, but we wanted to focus on the aesthetics with you today, and the issues that have changed over the last year. So again, we, we're in front of you in December, we had a community meeting February 20th of last year, that should say 2014, not 2013, and then officially back in front of you in December last month. In addition, we've had a number of BPAC meetings and other meetings with community. We couldn't have a public meeting where the character of the street didn't come up, whether we taught, we were talking about Parcel A, B, C, or D. So it's certainly been discussed with members of the community over the last year. Your direction was to move away from sharrows, which was a pretty unanimous direction given by everyone we talked to, and towards dedicated bike lanes, to soften the bend in the road, which we have confirmed traffic impacts. There was a study done by Ferrin Peers on a slightly different iteration of the master plan in March, which indicated that there were no new traffic impacts with our plan. In fact, it's less than the anticipated PDP, that we needed to be smarter about how we handled the UPS trucks and FedEx trucks that Maurice mentioned, and really get out and work with AC Transit and think about how buses and bikes and everyone interacts here in, in what's really a very urban streetscape. So just to kind of give you a sense of how they lay over, the existing Shellmount here is in red, and the proposed in yellow, and the idea is that we would build the yellow while the red is still in operation, and then someday switch it over. And the land that the city would be vacating is, is equivalent, I think it's actually a little bit less than the land that we would be dedicating, and so effectively, the, you know, the city would own the street, and I forget exactly how many inches back behind the street, and the intention is that the sidewalks would have an easement placed over them, so there'd be a public access along the sidewalks. But for all intents and purposes, it's, it's an improvement over what Shellmount is today, which has limited pedestrian and bike facilities. We talked a little bit about this a month ago, but, you know, really what we've been doing is designing a urban, a public realm, which is all about walking and cafe seating, and being outside and on the streets, and the, the kinds of widths and dimensions and crossings are all geared around that. Similarly, we think that, we understand this is very much a bike corridor, and so we've, we've taken steps to make sure that bikes are accommodated, not just accommodated, but really a thematic element of the project, whether it's bike racks everywhere, bike storage in buildings, bike lockers within the parking garage. The grocery tenant we're talking to is hugely invested in bike infrastructure for its employees and for its shoppers, so I think that will be a great fit with the project. Similarly, this is a transit environment, and especially with the Amtrak Bridge, and it can even more so as AC Transit moves forward with some of their longer-range plans, and so that's the, they don't have ironclad plans yet for the future of this area, but certainly between the eBots and other studies, it's, it's a big piece of it. Just a little bit on specifics, so we, there's only so much room between the train tracks and, and the existing office building and the retail building, and so it's really about how do we effectively manage that dimension to create the kind of walking and cycling environment that makes sense? And to that end, allocating pretty significant sidewalk dimensions, and a little bit of this is different from the last time, so there's an 18-foot zone in front of the parking garage, it's at the top of the street, at the top of the screen, that would be effectively the sidewalk, of which 10 to 12 feet is always guaranteed for pedestrian through, throughway, and the other six to eight feet is given over to pedestrians kind of every other tree. So we have to do stormwater treatment, LID treatment, which cannot be done in a tree well, because the trees would break through the treatment barriers. So those happen at the end of each parking spot, and there's only, so far the water will flow on a flat street. Anyway, too much information, but there's a live oak, legacy live oak, kind of paired as you go down the street, and then parking in between them. But the, the effect is this, it's a, it's a generous podium level, the retail is 17 to 22 feet, so really, as far as a pedestrian's concerned, there is no parking garage above. It's, the intention is to have a significant tree canopy, and that six-foot bike lanes would, I mean, you think about, the, the travel lane is 11 feet, the bike lane's 6 feet, so I think in the hierarchy of things, we're, we're doing quite well. So do you lose it on your screen, too?
No, we can see it here. You can see it.
I can see it. Relative to the Shellmount Design Guidelines, the, the picture on the right is from the Shellmount, is from our project, the pictures on the upper left are from the Shellmount Design Guidelines. So this is a, an allowance, I think, in the guidelines, where, where they're tight on space, we can do the parking between the trees, and we've taken it one step further and done parking between LID planters and trees. Unlike the guidelines, we're not doing it repetitive, we're kind of doing it every It's a little small, but generally speaking, the sidewalks are a minimum of 10/6, with seven, six to eight feet for either hangout space, sitting space, or parking. A piece of this that we talked about last month was how do we create a transit hub? How do we bring people over the Amtrak Bridge, down to the street, and onto a bus, and/or bike share? And the direction we'd prefer to go, and was certainly agreed to by AC Transit, was a bus bulb, where effectively, we create a cycle track behind an eight-and-a-half, nine-foot swath of land, and on that, and that, that keeps kind of the bikes out of the stopping bus, and the bus would stop in traffic, at a bulb out, at a bus shelter, and then proceed. Now, as we got into it, AC Transit currently runs south, and so this bulb would be for them, and the northbound bulb would be here. Emery Go-Around, because of the design of their bus, needs significant amount of time to load a wheelchair, and isn't interested in sharing real estate with AC Transit. So we've now allocated a 60-foot zone at the north end of the block for Emery Go-Around to stop, and they've agreed that they only want to travel north, so it's just, it's kind of, as it goes. So I had this slide up for you last month, which said a few things. It said we were advocating raised It said we were advocating raised crosswalks. And AC Transit asked if we could not advocate for that and instead do sidewalks down low. And AC Transit very much liked the idea of bus bulbs, and they thought that that was very much safer and easier. They preferred the 11-foot travel lane. It's in their design guidelines. And for all the reasons of safety and kind of throughput of traffic, the bus bulb made a lot of sense. We think the cycle tracks are a good way to deal with this. And then on top of that, the idea that Emery Go-Around doesn't want to share real estate and they, until they get a new bus fleet that has faster loading for wheelchairs, they really need to pull out. So just to get kind of again, and plan, and this crosshatching represents a very visible, but now kind of, you know, on-street-level crosswalk. And then we showed these, just to show them again, the idea of a cycle track. And these are some installations in Portland where at one end of the street, it comes up and we're looking at a six-foot on-street bike lane, class-two bike lane that comes up six inches and comes across as a five-foot to create a little bit more buffer in there between pedestrians, cars and bikes, and then comes back down onto the street at the north end. You know, the biggest thing in an urban district is how do you deliver a character in a kind of subtle and attractive way? So without saying, hey, you're in this urban district, it just happens. And to us, the biggest way to do that is with landscape. And the, we've debated street trees a lot with you all on the park, and I think this represents the latest iteration of that. But effectively, we're showing these pears of oaks, which we think are a kind of a good-sized street tree that will handle the particulars of the Emeryville environment. And then-
Did you say pears?
Hmm?
Did you say pears?
No. Southern live oak cultivar, and it's actually the legacy cultivar.
Oh.
Pears of trees.
No. We've gotten rid of the pears at the suggestion-
We're in the plan somewhere, sorry.
Pears of.
Gotcha.
Pears of non-pears. And we had pears in an earlier presentation and heard from you-
It's still in your plan.
Still heard, yeah. So the purples were the pears, and now we've gone to a ginkgo, which, we're going for more slender ginkgo, just given that it's next to the tower. And then really using the tristana as the kind of the neighborhood tree of the 63rd Street along the residential side of Parcel C, and then across the middle of the park, incorporating the New Zealand Christmas tree somewhere else. But we can kind of talk about that a little bit more. So anyways, the idea is a district that's exemplified by its street trees. We've talked about these before. So what that means on the ground for pedestrians is, so this is the office building as it exists today, Pete's Coffee is right here, a new crosswalk that comes across to the lobby of the parking garage, has a little café on the corner. The intention of upgrading the paving at that to really make it feel like a plaza, to incorporate sitting areas between the street trees, to have a sidewalk treatment that's concrete, banded in brick, to use a corte, tree grate, to use planters, shade trees. And so the image in the lower left is kind of standing here, looking at this corner, the net effect. Over the year, we've evolved our palette of street furnishings to be consistent with city standards on bike racks and lighting. We've introduced, in trashcans, we've introduced a few things like benches where we have a city standard, we have a kind of enhanced version in plazas. So I can stop there and answer any questions, or I can keep going?
We'd like you to keep going.
All right. Parcel B. So you know, the big idea when we got started here was we're trying to replace on an 11-acre site, surface parking with structured parking and convert the surface parking into higher, better uses. And to do that, we really felt we needed a parking reservoir. And that parking reservoir had to be pretty big. There's about 1,100 parking spaces out there today. So breaking up the length of the garage, you know, so we've looked at phasing, we've looked at other ways. The current thinking is that we're actually kind of overbuilding the amount of parking above the grocery store to bias the time to build everything out and get this parking garage built. And then, once we do that, we can build the residential around the grocery store and it all kind of balances out. This requires dependence on shared parking and thoughtfulness about how you manage parking, and I won't get into too much of that. When we saw each other in December of 2013, it was a more monolithic garage than what you've seen today. It was actually 18 feet longer. The back of the garage was wide open. It was just cable rails with some vegetation trained up it. And there really wasn't a, oh, and it was, there was only one way into the garage for cars. So since then, we've broken the garage and it really kind of reads as two buildings separated by about a 30-foot plaza. We've, and then we've changed the plans to, so that's that, that gap there. And this comes into a, it's not conditioned, but it's covered and a secure vertical circulation between a deeper retail area, 60-foot depths, and a 55-foot retail area. The intention is to anchor the ends with restaurants and a café in the middle, taking advantage of that southern sun. Circulation at the two ends in the middle, vertical circulation, each with an elevator and a stair. So no matter where you park in this, you know, block-long garage, you're ready access to ground. For a lot of transit, traffic reasons, we, a left-hand, southbound turn at the south end of the building backs up a lot of traffic. So we've incorporated an entrance and an exit at the north end, and an entrance and an exit at the south end. So if you're going to I-80, you know, you exit the north end of the building. If you're going south, you exit. And then like at Bay Street, you can drive through this on the ground floor. And so there's all loading zones for UPS, FedEx, and so forth in here, as well as fire truck access through. And then we've got some car share, preferred carpool parking, and some bike storage in the ground floor of the garage as well. We've also, at another planning commission hearing, talked about, well, UPS guys will never use that back there. So we've also allocated one of the areas on the street for, oh, it's right here, for short-term deliveries. So if they don't, if they park in the bike lane, it's not for a lack of opportunity to find a place to park. In terms of plan, when you come up, you come to a kind of a central area you can circle around. There's a speed ramp to get you up to the first parking level, and then after that, there's a park-on ramp that spirals up. This is the general lay of the building. What we've done, if you've ever gone to the top of a parking garage and had an awkward time turning around, we've, this is all about usability to make people want to come to the retail destination. So this lets you circle around and go back down. So again, this is about lots of vertical circulation, ease of use, dimensions built around ease of use. And it's all about getting people in and to the, to the street level as fast as possible. In section, as I mentioned, we have 17-foot floor-to-floor at the north end of the garage, a 22-foot floor-to-floor at the south end of the garage, is kind of due to the ramping. But this also gives us great space for restaurants and retail. In summary, it's 537 spaces. It's been studied as high as 660 and as low as 450, but we think this is about the right size, given the uses on-site. We're showing about 25,000 feet of commercial space, including three restaurants, cafés. There's a plaza. And at either end, kind of work with the restaurants, an expanded sidewalk area that would accommodate on sidewalk dining. And then the project as a whole, as a whole host of transportation and transit management policies, and we've, I think we've shared a report with you before. But the garage itself is the reservoir for electric vehicle charging, carpool, designated parking, and car share opportunities. So again, kind of what it looks like, as you approach from the south, we're looking at a metallic scrim, not unlike something you may have seen in Miami and other places. The south half of the building, we'd like to use a series of scrims. This is a photo I took in Miami a few weeks ago at a Frank Gehry building that's had a lot of success. Really is kind of a very effective device. And the north half of the building, we thought we would take a slightly different approach and use a concrete skin-expressed, kind of a concrete frame with a scrim, a kind of a screen put in there. And just, these are not the porosity of the new garage at the MacArthur-Bart station. If you've driven on the 24 overpass, you can kind of just see right in. These are about four times the mesh. It's kind of, I've got a quick sample we can circulate, but it's quite different from that garage. The back of the garage, the railroad facade of the garage, sorry, geez. We, as Mark mentioned, have gone through a number of options. And a year ago, it was perhaps too unsympathetic. It was an open cable rail and some vines. And we've looked at a way to shield the cars with the concrete stem walls and then incorporate a, call it corrugated, it's really an undulating metal panel system that would give it some texture and provide further shielding. And, you know, it's 450 feet or so. It's just, it's trying to find a way to harmonize the scale of the railroad tracks and the scale of this building with the surroundings. So this gives you a sense, and I think when you see it in perspective, and when you see it obliquely, like you'll see it from the pedestrian bridge, it's much less open than if you see it from straight on. But in no way should you be seeing headlights or any of the issues with cars. And this view also gives you an idea of how the landscape treatment's intended to really screen the north end of the garage as you come south on Shellmount.
So I guess-
Yes.
Did I miss something where along the railroad, we have the gray and the blue, the gray rectangles, and then the blue is open? Or is that where the screen is? I'm confused. Yeah, you can go back to that.
Yeah.
There you go. So the white is open completely?
So the white is open completely. The gray up to 42 inches is concrete.
So how would you not see cars? I'm confused.
Well, you wouldn't see the hood and the hood, the headlamps. You'd see the-
Because there would be a wall that's higher.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like a parapet wall. The end elevations is where we transition. So we've used a vertical circulation element, which is a metal screen, like a solid metal screen, and then board-form concrete stair enclosure. And so the east elevation wraps the corner, dives into the stair, and then the west elevation picks up there. So you see the north entry to the garage and the south entry. So this is that northwest corner, the café, the restaurant on the north. You see the concrete and screen above. That's the garage. The last piece of my presentation is Parcel C. And again, we have talked about components of this, and there was a tenant lined up a year ago that walked away. But interestingly, we're back with a very similarly sized building in a different urban condition. We listened to what you had to say a year ago about how do you load it? Can we make this a more urban, taller building? Can we eliminate the surface parking, which that previous iteration had, and make sure that we don't have a back to the building? It's not, it's not like you drive behind and see all the nasty stuff. And then there's certainly been a lot of debate about closing the plaza to auto traffic. And at the time, this is the scheme we had a year ago, and it had some surface parking and a ramp up to rooftop parking, and it had a truck loading along Shellmount and a two-way plaza. Subsequent to that, we have now narrowed the traffic to a one-way through the plaza that the fire department would like to use. And we think, you know, serves a good circulation purpose some of the time, but serves a great kind of people place a lot of the time. And, you know, we haven't gotten into how we manage that or how it's used yet. The entry to the residential component would be off of the park. So it's really, you know, this is the park residences. And then you can see that that building's tall enough that it shields a view of the parking from Parcel D. You know, in terms of loading, for a lot of reasons, the Shellmount loading makes a ton of sense. It's facing a, you know, Maurice brings up a lot of great points, but you know, in our minds also, it's facing the railroad tracks. We believe we can manage time and delivery. We think the conflicts based on those times of delivery are manageable. We've double-sized the truck bay to make sure there's enough room for it. And we also provided a loading area for trucks to pull off of, kind of on the street. That said, this, with a little bit of automotive gymnastics, you can certainly load from 63rd, 64th, and Market Drive and back in, albeit with some beeping of trucks. And I think that we would think differently about what times of day, so as not to disturb residents. But the net effect to the grocery store and to the floor plans of the residences is unchanged.
Do you have the truck turning templates for that new design?
I do. I just didn't, I forgot to put them in the show. But depending on the size of the truck, it can either come up 63rd from Christie or from Shellmount. Or it can come up 64th from either. And it can back all the way from 64th. If it's a sufficiently large truck, that would be like a WB50, let's say a Cisco truck or something, might have to come in from 64th. But a bread truck or a beer truck could come in up 63rd. And again, it's kind of the reason we were originally leaning towards the Shellmount loading with, you know, sort of regardless of make and model, that the trucks had the width. And I've been looking over the fence at the new Safeway by my house in Rock Ridge, and you know, they load off of Clermont, and it's too soon to say if it's going to be a success or not. But they do much more truck gymnastics than we're proposing on Clermont Ave. And so, you know, it's certainly a condition that happens in urban environments. So nevertheless, you know, we'd love to hear your opinions on that. And I think where we're at is, the bulk of the building is unchanged. We just affect some of the dimensions. The idea is that the grocery store is entered off of Shellmount and the plaza, that certain purveyors, these guys have some really cool food things that, and a bakery that would be a great asset and spill out onto the plaza. If you've been out in the parking lot, you've seen the big bunker, which is the fire suppression system and gas lines for the office building. So we need to accommodate that in a well in this building. And then the residential building would wrap the back. And the intention is to do two-story townhomes off of stoops on the ground floor, with again, a lobby off of the park and a retail, possibly café on the corner. This is just, you know, this is certainly some truck gymnastics. This would be the biggest truck if we did load off Shellmount. It's a three-point turn. So the, you know, the intention is to really anchor the end of Shellmount as you drive north. You know, appropriate signage. We'd be dealing with some of the similar challenges of screening cars, but have the primary vertical circulation piece for the grocery store, which is, I mean, frankly, this is part of the parking for the project as a whole, be right off of Shellmount and visible. If you go up one level, which would be the upper floors of the townhouses, you'd still be the kind of open-to-below area of the parking garage, I mean, of the grocery store, sorry. And then as you go up to the third floor, that would be the parking, about 100 cars for the grocery store, where they deal with their grocery carts and other things. And then we'd start to get residences, apartment ones, twos, studios. We've kept the vertical circulation. We've done a pair of cores. This core is shared with the parking garage. This core is dedicated to the residential. In each of the floor plans, we've kept the residences out towards the perimeter and used that kind of extra triangle space above the loading zone for trash, pretty generous bike and storage rooms, kind of all the things that you're seeing in a lot of residential parking garages, where here, we wanted to do it inside the building on each floor. And so the units stack as you go up, and then the rooftop with- And so the units stack as you go up, and then the rooftop with, you know, kind of sneaking past PPP, some views of the bay and the city. And we're, at this point, kind of just getting into it and thinking about, you know, are there vegetable plots? Are there trees? Are there places to sit and get some sun on the right times of day? And again, we're just still getting into it. So in section, it's three floors of parking above a grocery store wrapped by a five-story residential building. And we've looked, as Maru said, at a couple of different versions. Each one is the same square footage. Frankly, at this stage, we're leaning towards more units. We think that has more market value at the moment, and we think it's right for the market at the moment. Obviously, we'd love to hear your opinion. Nevertheless, regardless of the iteration, there's ground floor townhouses, which we do think are a very family-oriented product, especially next to the park in both cases. 63rd, just for a second, so here's the parcel D building on the left-hand side, and here's our proposed building on the right. Again, it's on-street parking, biofiltration, street trees. These are the Tristana again. Planters on each stoop. We have paired some of the stoops, but not all the stoops. But anytime we pair the stoop, there's about a four-foot planter between them. And so here's just a vignette of what 63rd might look like. Oop. This is kind of a summary. It's a 30,000-foot grocery store, 2,500 feet of retail. All of the service and deliveries is enclosed. 300 parking spaces on the roof and three levels. Up to 77 units of housing with a rooftop common space and no real other roof, you know, amenities at this building size. And then the intention is to phase construction and do the grocery and parking first and follow up with the residential. We got into units. I think they're consistent with a lot of units you've seen as part of the larger marketplace project. Studios, ones, twos. The ground floor townhouses, which are more generous twos. And we've popped out the living area on the ground floor, which are those bays that you've seen, which we think really will add a nice, kind of charming element to the units. And then we looked at some studies of kind of a masonette on the roof, which was a two-bedroom plan as well, and had a little terrace. Yeah, we've looked at a lot of, in terms of the aesthetics, this is our proposed view of 63rd Street. So you're seeing a mix of brick, of stucco, and then a metal panel, whether it's standing seam or another. We're still kind of looking into it. This is a building that I saw recently in Seattle. This is a building under construction here in Emeryville that we really liked the glazing of, and I was impressed at the price they got it for. So we're definitely thinking that some of these kind of Portland-Seattle, Bay Area precedents are appropriate for this. Again, so the idea of 63rd Street, the bay for the townhouses, they get a little bit of a stoop. The third-floor units, the living room takes advantage of that. And then on the fourth floor, they get a little, these units get a porch, taking advantage of the top of that mass. And the fifth-floor units would have the potential for a little terrace in front. So we're trying to take advantage of this 63rd Street being a great residential street and understanding that, you know, a lot of the time, it's pretty nice to be outside. The plaza elevation, so you see the height of the residential building here on the left with the potential cafe-retail shop here, and then the parking over grocery. So in spite of it looking, and it's kind of small on the screen, that's a 23-foot floor-to-floor, or, sorry, clear for the grocery. So I think, you know, in terms of verticality, again, like at the garage, we've got a, in order to accommodate the tenant, a very generous floor-to-floor, which makes the, actually the floor-to-floor on the townhouse units very generous as well. And then parking above. We've looked at all sorts of things about PVs for the roof of the garage. We continue to look at it. It gets a pretty healthy shadow cast across it from the office building and prohibits a little bit, but we're continuing to look. Here, on the top, is the park elevation. And again, it's mixing brick and stucco with metal panel. And then this was an earlier, this is an earlier version where the lobby glazing is carried all the way up. We've just kind of flipped it to here in the last update based on the change of the grocery loading. And then this is still in the works because, you know, very recently, it was a loading dock. So we're kind of working through what the Shellmount elevation is, and we've, are currently showing their offices and break rooms over here. So we think there's definitely the potential for some porosity on that side of the building. But generally, the kind of look and feel of it from Christie Park is explored here. So that's our presentation, and you kind of get a sense of the scale of everything here, and obviously, we're available for questions.
Thank you.
Can we see that sample of whatever the mesh you brought?
Yeah, yeah. So the idea is to mix the mesh, and we need to obviously do some, a little bit more testing, but the density of it, as it reacts to the light, gives you a different impression. It's really terrific obliquely. Even the wider one, when you see it as you walk down the street, it has no porosity. And when you see it head-on, it's a little more porous. So we were envisioning using the denser mesh wherever you can see, kind of perpendicular to the garage, like where Shellmount bends. And then the wider mesh would be intermixed where you really only see it obliquely. But I was really, it's really, first of all, Miami is like the center of parking garage innovation, and it's really kind of impressive to see how effective this stuff is. And so that Frank Gehry building actually only uses the really big mesh, and the MacArthur mesh compared to this is significantly bigger. So we think it's pretty cool.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'll take things apart.
I've got some questions. The crosswalk at the garage, sometimes, like in different images, it shows up at different places. Is the intention that it actually align with that little plaza?
Yes. Yeah. We, no, I lost the screen. The thought is that that crosswalk is really, it's kind of shifted left or right, about 10 or 15 feet over the, it kind of goes left and it goes right, depending on how the garage is shaken out. But we envisioned most of the office users parking and coming across that crosswalk, and so it's pretty proximate to the office front door. I just want to get to the plan here.
I think we had some thoughts at our last meeting about how that crosswalk interacts with the grand staircase, if I remember correctly.
That was a separate, yeah, that was a separate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But yeah.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me-
Well, that was, I mean, it sounds like the intention is that it align with the plaza.
It's, the intention on this plaza is that it align with the plaza. And the intention on the grand stair was that it intentionally not align. And-
We can get to that when we get to the first place.
Yeah, so there's, obviously, and we invited AC Transit and Emery going to the debate as much as it's relevant to them, and we've, yeah, that's, we heard you loud and clear, we studied it, we've lengthened the bike, the bus stops, and we've continued to land on this as the location.
So back, can you go back to the image of the plaza, the rendering, where you sort of had, there, yeah. So at the, that opening into the parking lot, or the parking garage-
Yeah.
Right here, it looks like there's kind of a frame structure. I'm guessing that's maybe a mesh.
No, it's glass.
Oh, that's glass.
Yeah.
So other, on the elevations, it's called out as a mesh, and it doesn't show a frame structure. So I'm guessing, I'm just trying to understand what that-
We looked at two things, and we're kind of, kind of keeping the two things that I'd love to hear we have to say. One is a kind of tempered lobby with glass or plex above, kind of going up. A second is same-tempered lobby, but with more of an art mesh. We talked about having an artist kind of do an installation here, and so I've defined it in as much as I can envision it at the moment. But something that is interesting and dynamic that gives some enclosure to the garage. So, you know, I don't think we've landed on that.
So that's around the front of the garage?
No, it's literally, in elevation, it's just 30 feet between the two masses.
Do you, the parcel C, do you have any, do you have any elevations of the building after phase one, prior to phase three?
Not today. We, sort of driving over here, I knew you were going to ask that question. No. You know, the preference would be to leave the garage open till events, and then when we do the wrapper, complete the walls so you get a solid wall to the garage. We would like to utilize the ground floor, the grade, to start to get the streetscape improvements and parking in temporarily. I mean, certainly, the intention's not that there's a huge delay between the two, but-
And then just in this rendering right here, can you explain what the materials are on that garage? I mean, is that concrete? Is that like integral color concrete? And then what are those panels?
Yeah. So what we're showing here is obviously a metal storefront, kind of dark bronze color, a deep awning, 12 feet or so, metal and glass, a metal belt course effectively, a conditioned lobby, or a tempered, let's say a tempered lobby. So you're seeing glazing going all the way up on the lobby with kind of metal muttons, mulients. And then here, we're showing a metal vertical between what we are picturing as either a charcoal brick or a stucco masonry structure. So, I don't know, we're kind of keen on, a couple of office buildings near our office minted, and another one just gave themselves a paint job, and there's a kind of coolness of this kind of gray stucco, which I think's kind of on-brand with the color of the garage. So anyway, and then these are solid metal panels that would block the car.
Like corrugated or something like that?
Yeah. And honestly, we're kind of looking at a bunch of ideas, and we even got a couple more we can debate. I think we're just, we're looking at ways to allow this thing to vent naturally as much as possible and be on-brand with the rest of the building. So right now, we're looking at a metal panel in front of a kind of a concrete barrier.
Any other questions? Right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and open the public comment for this item. So if anyone would like to speak on the marketplace parcels B or C, please come forward.
Good evening again. Rod Henme, a neighbor that lives about a block away from this development. A few comments that I have to make on the B parcel. One is I would advise the commission to be very careful about the screen in terms of the transparency and the detail, and the cost is exceptional, so that therefore, one should condition that the exact design and detail is specified, and they can't V value-engineer it out later, and it becomes much more transparent. Second thing on the railroad side, I think it's a good start, that I would hope that it could be, continue as a study. I would suggest they might look at, for example, in Mission Bay, there's two award-winning garages by WRNS and Sadowitz Design, and I think it could be a more sophisticated pattern and treatment than what they currently have now. The third comment is the idea of moving the plaza and the garage to the south so that it aligns with the part that's in front of the Emeryville Market, rather than in front of the Emeryville Office Building, so that that widened space would just then, so that the crosswalk would be just at the corner of the office building and open to the plaza. On the C project, I would hope, I would strongly encourage the commission to not allow loading off Shellmount. I think it's a horrible idea. I think even any curb cut on Shellmount is not a good idea because of the curve of the road and the traffic, et cetera. And so I think the idea of loading where it currently is shown is a much better idea, and I hope you will not agree to that condition. One thing about that is the loading dock right now, that entry to the garage is shown as 33 feet. It might actually want to get wider so that a truck can be pulling in and a car can get by at the same time. On the 62nd Street treatment, one suggestion would be perhaps that street could be treated without curbs and just bollards to protect it for traffic and use unit pavers so that the plaza from the market to the new grocery store could just flow straight across the street, rather than having curb cuts, curves and all that sort of thing. And then finally, the last comment I would have on that building is the architecture I would hope could be much more inspired and much more modern, contemporary. To me, it looks like a kind of full modernism of Camden Yards and AT&amp;T Ballpark with the divided windows and the brick and HOK Sports. And I think that Emeryville, to your credit, as a dot design review commission, has really put together a lot of very modern, very fine, elegant architecture, and I think this should meet that kind of standard and be more inspired than it currently is. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Moss and Commissioner Stephen Keller, resident at PPP. And I'm going to take the opposite approach, as you know and know, and I have written to you, is I believe that the loading should be on Shellmount Street. As a person in that neighborhood who has to endure the railroad horns and et cetera daily basis at all times, the parking garage or the loading dock makes no sense on the 63rd Street. The beeping that's going to create, be created when even its truck puts its gear in reverse, it starts beeping. And then through the duration, it goes into the dock, it's going to be between three, five-story or taller buildings. So the beeping will be incessant. It'll be inside everybody's house because they're right below that. And if it's illegal by the zoning that we can't use Shellmount Street, I don't even know why we're looking at that as an option. So I hear what the planning director is saying, but I think we need to look at the neighbors that are going to be living in this neighborhood, and we're talking hundreds of people that are going to have to endure those trucks every day. I live on this, off that street. I look at it every day. If the loading were to happen at 6:00 a.m., I go to work and take that street at 7:30 in the morning, there is very, very light traffic. And after nine o'clock at night, the traffic goes away. We're only talking a few peak periods. So if the market does not use those peak periods to load, there shouldn't be a conflict of which they're fearful of. So I think that's just something we really need to look at. I understand their concerns, but there's a lot of curb cuts. There's 63rd Street coming out there, there's 62nd Street coming out there. One more garage isn't going to make or break this project. And I think quality of life issues is what we've got to really look at here. Secondly, I don't care for the eastern facade of the parking level. We need to do better work on that. And on the Shellmount Street side, the southern exposure on that curved wall looks way too glitzy. It's not something that's really indicative of this project, so I really hope that we take a better look at that. The plan for the townhouses fronting the grocery store, some of the best architecture I've seen around, I think those are a fabulous idea. If that's the direction this is going, we're going to have a really, really, really nice neighborhood, and so I really think we need to take a look at that. But the Shellmount Street has got to be where the loading dock is at all. There's going to be a lot of miserable neighbors there. And, you know, we know Shellmount is basically a cut-through for traffic. It's not, a lot of us don't use that. And this could be a traffic calming device. It could make people, you know, use other streets. And then the other thing I want to know is if Christie's going to become the primary street for those cars or those vehicles to come into the project, I certainly don't want an 18-wheeler down Christie Avenue all the time. So they need to, you know, tell us, are they going to be able to access that 63rd Street access from Shellmount, or are all these trucks going to be coming down Christie? And then, that dock is not big enough to handle all cars, so are the bread trucks and the beer trucks going to be parking outside the parking, or outside the loading dock to load their products because they can't get in? Because the illustrations show one 18-wheeler will block that whole thing. And as it's pulling in, it's going to block ours. So, thank you.
Okay, now I speak to the applicant, except I won't be turned around since, for benefit of the cameras and for the, for any commissioners, but I am speaking to the applicant here. I strongly recommend you shop this project around town more than you have. Specifically, you should make a presentation to Residents United for a Livable Emeryville. That's the premier citizen activist group here in town, also known as RULE. So I think you should make a presentation to RULE. You can find out from City Hall how to get ahold of RULE. There's a, there's something here that's, this is not going to happen, that's, that's being proposed here, and that is they're talking about making sixty-third street and sixty-second and the Market Drive all private streets. Well, that's, just so everybody knows, that's not going to happen. Unless, by private, they mean every activity that's permitted on any public street is permitted in perpetuity, without any chance of revocation. Barring that, there's just no way we're going to allow these streets to be private. They're going to be public streets. The sidewalks are going to be public, the streets are going to be public, and we're not, just so you know that we're not going to, we're not going to do that, unless, of course, they, they mean that we're allowed to use the streets as every other street with, having that be revocable. Okay, there's a problem with this project, and that is the housing element. Also, the, the family-friendly design guidelines. Now, let's go to the guidelines first. The project can't be built, as proposed. Here's a, here's a, an example, you'll pull this over the camera, to see of, like, typical two-bedroom apartments that they're planning on building. Here's our family-friendly design guidelines. And you can see the upper typical apartments are, it's called desirable, the lower one is called undesirable. Now, this project that is being proposed here tonight is, by definition, from a family-friendly standpoint, according to our internal documents here at City Hall, undesirable in every way it's measurable. So, you can't say yes to this project, because, unless you overturn our family-friendly design guidelines. Similarly, you can't say yes to the project unless you overturn the housing element, because the amount of rental versus ownership that this project presents is not allowed by our, by our housing element. Housing element is not, is not the force of law, but it is a guideline for how to build a livable city here, and it's a brand-new document, just certified in October. So we can't build this project, it's not family-friendly, it's too much rental, and our own documents say it can't be built as proposed. So, you should pay attention to the documents here at City Hall.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the Marketplace parcels B and C? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment.
Okay, so I'm going to start with B, and I have great reservation about what I'm seeing or not seeing in the elevations in terms of the facade along the west side. It seems very monolithic and kind of almost clownish on the east side. So, a lot of work needs to be done in terms of refinement in that. And also, this building does not, it's not cohesive with the rest of the project that's being proposed. It doesn't have to be exactly the same, but it's kind of gone off the res, in my opinion. So, I was, I know you guys probably talked about this on, last month, but I was not here. And the truck loading, it seems like, I'm, I'm happy to see that there's truck loading on both sides of the street, but I'm wondering if that wouldn't be just the case all the way along. It seems like we're putting in four parking spots for, or, you know, very few parking spots, and making all these back bends to have them in there, when we, we need places for buses to pull out, and we need loading. So, let's just get that handled and skip the cars parking in front of the stores, in my opinion. But there may have been some other discussions about that in December, I'm not sure.
Well, they did say that the loading for those stores would be behind them.
Well, but we know what happens with UPS and Federal Express trucks, and we've already, they've already addressed that, so I think we can continue to address that.
We did, I'll just say, we did have a very good presentation last month about how, about the street and the buses and the bus bulb-outs and the bike lanes and the, you know, buffered bike lanes and all, kind of all, all that worked together.
Yeah, and of course, I love the idea that the bikes get to go around and there's a bulb-out, et cetera, and at the same time, it blocks traffic, so it's kind of, not, not loving it. So, it was an interesting point about where, again, that our neighborhood architect citizen mentioned, about where the center of the, sort of the, the plaza is located, and it is across from, maybe not the most active use. So, that was an interesting thought, that I don't know if you've, you know, could take that into account, possibly moving it further to the south, made sense to me. Certainly, also in terms of, we're going to need a little bit better... No, no, actually, that's, that's more for C. So, the last thing is, in terms of the trees that are replacing, I know we're having, we're sort of ninety-five trees short of the replacement for all the small trees that are in the parking lot. And I think, have you looked into using thirty-six inch boxes for the street trees? Is that, I think, would...
Our current thought is thirty-six or forty-eights.
Or forty-eights, excellent. I thought that would be a good way to balance that out and get the large size now. And then in terms of C, parcel C, I have grave reservations of how this grocery store is going to work at all. I don't, I haven't, I'm not convinced that it's working now, and I don't know how it's going to work. I don't, have you looked, did you at all, I actually should have asked this question when you were up there, but did you look at having two loading zones, say, a small loading zone over on Shell Mound, and then a larger truck loading?
Yeah, and we do.
Yeah.
There's a loading zone on Shell Mound, where the two little people are standing at the end of the bike lane. This grocer sources locally and in their stores.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had said that was on sixty-second.
The big truck would come in, and there's a, like a guest, customer loading area on sixty-second. And then right here, there's a commercial loading area. They have, a lot of their guys come and pick up trucks, actually.
Right.
So it's...
For smaller?
Yeah.
It's great that you wrapped it with residential, and at the same time, these trucks backing up is going to be brutal. It's just brutal. And the, certainly, the width of the drive aisle going up to the garage would be in, you know, at this point, would be in conflict. I think it would need to be widened so that everyone could do the gymnastics that you mentioned a little bit more. But I'm, that being said, I'm, I'm not convinced that this is feasible in this spot. It's, it's a great idea in terms of anchoring the space, and I don't, not... With all that residential there, it's, it's, it's a very difficult challenge, and I'm not, I'm not feeling it yet as, as a successful solution. I think the, the articulation on, on parcel C is pretty good, except for the, there is, again, the question mark above, the sort of pedestrian-level articulation is good, but the, what's happening above in terms of where the parking is, is still in question. Needs to be fleshed out a little bit better and made slightly more, have a little bit more sense of detail. There was also talk about, do we want to have no access to the townhomes from inside? And I'm torn about that as well, because I'm thinking if I lived in those townhomes, I would want to be able to get in from my car and not have to walk all the way around. So I, I would not, not feel like that that would need to happen. And that's, that's about, also, another possible approach in terms of keeping some continuity is to screen the parking elevation with maybe mullions that are somewhat open in some areas and have mesh in the others, but sort of echo the parkside window treatment that you have to kind of keep continuity throughout the building. And that is what I have for now.
Well, my concern is, again, the delivery trucks, and I have the misfortune to live in a third-floor condominium on the westernmost part of Bate and adjacent to Trader Vic's, and I hear their trucks beeping and backing in. Some of my neighbors and I have gotten together, and we've negotiated with Trader Vic's, and they now don't come before seven in the morning, or after six in the evening. But during the day, when I'm home now, as I'm retired, I still hear the noise of it. It would appear to me that, while it requires some adjustment, you might bring the trucks in on the private road that's behind, on the west side of the public market, and have them back into something on the west side of the building, where you are now showing some apartment units. And then, it's not near, or not close to any residential, except the units that might be above it. Also, I think it's a mistake to try and have the trucks back into the same area that people leave and enter the garage, which has three hundred cars, and that could have a certain amount of traffic that could be interrupted. If you look on sixty-third and, the street between the buildings to the left, all of those buildings are six stories high, so that the echo and reflection and the noise is going to be magnified, and I think that's one more reason to try and get it on the back side, if possible.
Yeah, I think you have a real puzzle with the loading on the store. I'm, you know, I, I was thinking that it made much more sense to load from Shell Mound, but I think that the Public Works Director's comments convinced me that that's not a reasonable solution either, given the safety concerns and giving the, given the traffic congestion concerns and that, because I know that there is a very high volume of traffic on that street. Although, I would imagine it might be reduced a little bit, since it's going, the street's narrowing, and it's getting more pedestrianized. But I think that that, the potential noise issues there and the conflicts between cars coming in and out of the garage and cars, and the trucks in the loading zone, and having these trucks on a residential street coming in also just seems like it's not, not a good solution. And I'm not sure what else, you know, sounds like there are other possibilities to think about, including coming in behind the marketplace, but I think that requires more thought. And like the other commissioners and other people have said, I think that this is an opportunity, if you're going to do structured parking with screens and use those metal screens or some other kind of screening, it's an opportunity to do something that could be an art piece or an award-winning piece. I mean, I've seen ones with punch metal panels that, that are scenes. You know, I'm thinking of one that I saw in Copenhagen that looks like parking, cars parked up five stories, but it's the punch metal screen instead. It's just, there's a lot of opportunities to do things. And even if you're going to put in forty-eight-inch box trees along Shell Mound, it's going to be a while before you're not seeing this vast expanse of parking above the level of the retail. So that has to be something that's done in an interesting and creative way in order for it to work and not just look really austere or really garish. So I'm looking forward to seeing some really creative solutions on that. I too thought it was an interesting idea to look at moving the plaza area closer to the rest of the commercial retail across the way, across from the marketplace entrance. And I also think that the railroad side of the garages and all the buildings on the railroad side are really, they're, they're visible from sixty-second street, they'll be visible from the transit center, they're visible from the terraces, they're visible from the Powell Street overcrossing. They just have to have more attention than what is being paid on this rear end of, rear, you know, backside of the parking garage. I'm really glad that you're working with Emery Go-Round and AC Transit. They have a really, you know, they have a long history of understanding what works for getting their passengers on and off their, their vehicles, so I'm glad you're continuing to work with them. And I sort of defer to them on, on the way that the buses and vehicles enter and exit the traffic. And I do like the cycle track idea. In terms of the architecture and the cladding around the grocery building, I'm not crazy about the architectural style. It looks to me like, and it, it just doesn't, it's not cutting it for me very well. It just looks like a big industrial building. I'm not seeing personal entries and, you know, a sense of personal spaces going in there. So I, maybe it's partly the way it's been rendered, but it doesn't look like an appealing place. It doesn't look like a friendly place. It doesn't look like a family-friendly place from, just from the, the appearance. I would rather see, if there are going to be units around this, I would rather see larger rather than smaller, especially facing the park. It looks like there's some of the bigger units that are facing sixty-third street, and I think that all of the larger ones should be facing the park. What else? Retail garage building. I think, you know, I think that I've been hearing other good comments. Might be nice to green up the, the alleyway that leads towards the garage, the little plaza, a little bit more with some more ground plane planting. And, yeah, again, I'd just like to see a little bit more articulation or defined entries or defined senses of residential units on that building, if, if they're wrapping the grocery. That's what I have for the moment. And I'm glad to hear also that you're looking at the photovoltaics on the roofs, because there should be something aside from parking spaces on the roofs of these buildings, because those roofs are also going to be visible from different places around, from the taller residences, from the taller towers, and from a lot of just different angles. So, making use of that space for something other than top-floor bare parking is, is a good idea.
Yeah, I guess I'll start with parcel B. I think it's a little, it's a little tricky as far as how you're going to handle this, being that you're... I think what everybody probably wants to avoid, and you want to avoid, is something like Bay Street, where, you know, as much as you try to put a facade to it and create a, create a retail corridor, you know you're in a mall, you feel the parking, you feel this porosity to the parking. And I think you're starting to do it. I think that, that the treatment of the parking above is going to be key. I think the northern end, where you're just sort of... I think the northern end where you're just sort of saying, oh, it's parking above, you're just kind of continuing the structure and putting the screens and, you know, dropping the screens into the frame, seems a little, I like that, I guess, a little bit more than the other end where it's, I get the playful approach, and I kind of actually do like that southern corner. It is kind of glitzy, but, I mean, this is going to be a new neighborhood, so who knows what the actual character of the entire space is going to be. But, but yeah, just making sure it doesn't have that mall feel is going to be key. And I think that central plaza and the treatment of the entrance to the parking garage is going to be important. That's why I asked about the different renderings. I think the rendering with the frames and the windows in it feels maybe a little better. My concern is if that's just the screen treatment dropping down to the ground with a cutout in it, that it will, it'll really have that feeling of the garage just sort of spilling into the street and that porosity that you see in a lot of modern malls. I think lining up that plaza with something, even if it's that little alley between the taller building, the existing taller building and the rest of the public market, would be nice. And then, you know, and a couple, both in Parcel B and Parcel C, I think a lot's going to, a lot of the, like that, the southern portion of Parcel B and the Parcel C grocery facade, I think how, you know, that's why I was asking about the materials, if this is, if this is sort of like a charcoal brick or a gloss, like, you know, glossy charcoal brick or something along those lines, I think it could be really nice. If it's plaster and it's not done, you know, done right, it could start to feel cheaper. And so, you know, I think how that work, you know, what materials you're using is really going to dictate how well that works. But I am kind of liking a lot of the general moves that you're making. I do have a concern about Parcel C and how long it will be between Phase One and Phase Three, and if this basically is, you know, looks like a grocery store with a garage above it and around it for years, would be a big concern of mine. I'm a little conflicted with regard to the loading area for Parcel C. I like the idea of taking it off of that portion of Shellmount, because it opens up the possibility of having, like, you have the break room and the entrance through there. And I think that that, along with the ability to have, you know, I had a lot of, you know, concerns about the continuity to, which one is it, Parcel D along Shellmount, and how to really connect that now that you've got the lobby on that corner. I think having, having just sort of like a little plaza there and some porosity and human action happening right there on the other side of that wall with windows can make that connection, you know, definitely help that connection, but then at the same time, trucks trying to back up into that space and, you know, the, all the sounds that are associated with that echoing in that sort of canyon that's being created, I could see that being a big problem. So that's something I'm sure you'll figure out over time. Yeah, and definitely like seeing elevations of the grocery store or the Parcel C without, before the wrap of the residential wrap would be important. And, yeah, I think that's it. Oh, yeah, back to the, I mean, the unit design. I mean, I agree with some of the comments that have been made by the, by the public. Basically, some of these unit designs are clearly set up to be, you know, a few people who are friends, who are basically kind of dormitory style for adults, you know, living situations and not really registering as family-friendly. So I'd like to see some of those transitioning towards something that puts more importance on the common spaces of the units and maybe reduces the sizes of some of the bedrooms. Yeah, thanks.
All right, I'll start with Parcel C. I really, I really like the architecture of the wrap portion. I think maybe of all the buildings, maybe of all the buildings we have tonight, this might be my favorite one, architecture-wise. I do, I do feel fairly strongly that the, I won't say fairly, I do feel very strongly that the, the ground-floor townhome units shouldn't, shouldn't load from the backside as well. It's far too easy to come down to the, I mean, I mean, you're going to have to come down to the street level anyway to enter them, and it's far too easy to just, you know, exit the building from the other side of the lobby and enter your unit. And I think, you know, we want that interaction on the, on the street. I do, I mean, it's really a trade-off. I can see both sides of it, but I think I have landed that I prefer the loading dock in this new location. It's really a trade-off to me between screening it, which is always a real big challenge, and, you know, and the possible impacts of it, but I think that can be managed. I mean, I think in either location, you're going to have some impacts to it. And I think in either location, it can kind of be managed in different ways, but, so I've sort of landed that I, that I like this location as, as a way to screen it. What else? So I guess that's, oh, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask this question again since I'm on Parcel C, I guess. Is there, I can't remember if I asked this before, but, and I don't know if this is a question for staff or the applicant, but is there a reason that there needs to be vehicular access at all on 62nd Street?
Besides emergency vehicles.
Besides emergency vehicles.
Vehicular access to what? Oh, you mean just, do vehicles need to go through there at all?
Yeah, I mean, well, do we even need emergency vehicle access, I suppose?
I don't know about that, but I, from a circulation standpoint, I don't think it's really necessary. There is, it is shown as a local street in the general plan, for what that's worth.
The fire department also wanted access on that street.
Okay.
So that was one of their primary concerns.
Okay. All right. That's, that's sort of what I was getting at, so. All right, so, all right, so on to Parcel B. I agree a lot with Commissioner Kumerly's comments that I think we have a long way to go on this. I think it still looks like a parking structure, and I think we don't want it to look like a parking structure. There are some good examples, the gentleman that commented previously mentioned a couple of examples in Mission Bay. I'm not familiar with those. I'm, I'll have to go look at them. I'm very interested to see them. But the two examples that come to my mind, although not, the aesthetic of these structures is not appropriate, but they, I think they're great examples of how a parking structure cannot look like a parking structure, are the parking structure, the new parking structure for the Alameda Theater, which was designed, you know, it only has one, it has a bad, it has one bad side that faces the CVS parking lot that looks like a parking structure, but the side that, that faces Oak Street does not look terribly like a parking garage. And it was obviously designed in the Art Deco style of the rest of that building. So, you know, not, the architectural style isn't appropriate for this, but it, you know, has good vertical lines, and it does a lot of things that kind of make it blend in with the rest of that building. There's also a good example that I like in Petaluma, in the, I don't know what they call that area, the theater district maybe or something? It's kind of that new, newer area of downtown Petaluma. And it's a very, it's a, it's a very modern-looking parking garage. It's not contemporary-looking, but it's very modern-looking. And I think that's a really interesting example as well. And that, again, also has some, you know, some, some small parts of it that are not as good as other parts, but I think in general, that's a very, a very nice-looking garage that you would, you know, you would walk by it and not think, this is definitely a parking garage. So, yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, I don't want to give you any specific guidance, but I, you know, I don't want to design your parking garage for you, but I just think this, it needs a lot of interesting architectural elements that read like a building and not like a parking garage. It's very, I think it, right now, it's very monolithic-looking, and it's very, it's very horizontally oriented. I think it needs something to, to break it up a little bit and make it more vertical and to make it less, less monolithic. So I think I will just leave my comments there in the interest of moving on and getting on with the other study sessions.
Chair Moss. I just have a couple of brief things. One is that I don't mind it looking like a parking garage, as long as it looks like a really good parking garage, because that's what it is, you know? That's what it's there for. And I do also want to emphasize that the units should be designed to be family-friendly and have more attributes that work for that. Thank you.
Chair Moss, could I just make one comment? Just, just a little information to, for whatever it's worth. I just want to note that there are residents proposed adjacent to the loading dock location on Shellmount Street as well. There are residents, there would be residents across, along 63rd Street and across 63rd Street, and also along Shellmount Street on Parcel D. So, you know, wherever you put the loading dock, it's not going to be too far from residents who are going to be able to hear it. The other thing I want to note is that at Bay Street, it's not exactly analogous, because in that location, it doesn't have ramps that serve the residences, but the major loading docks at Bay Street are in the big building that the movie theater is in, and they're right there inside the, as you drive into the parking garage, you're going past the loading docks. So somehow they've managed to work it so that the trucks come in and maneuver and don't seem to interfere with the car traffic, although I have run into a few traffic jams there with, with trucks backing up, but it's not very common. They've managed to make the parking and the loading areas work together, so I think it can be done.
They're much larger, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. All right, with that, I think we will move on to our next study session on the marketplace. This one is the Shellmount site.
Did we lose the projector again?
Yes.
Great.
I'm picking out of this one. I've had my medicine for today.
So I'm just going to briefly introduce the Parcel A. I'm not going to show any slides since it's not on here. We did have a study session in October of last year, and there were several concerns that were made. One, primarily the location of the pedestrian bridge connection. I think staff and the commission was pretty unanimous in wanting to see the pedestrian connection where it used to be in the approved PUD, which is through the building, through the Shellmount building. So that they have changed, and they have relocated where it was supposed to be. That is the one big change. There was a change in the unit mix as well. The unit mix, the total number has been reduced by about, from 218 to 185. And they have increased the number of three-bedroom units from, it was used to be four-person, now it is the same, and they've, I think they have increased, they've increased their studios. There were several comments that were made at the community meeting. Traffic was identified as a big concern, and the need to find a good wayfinding signage was suggested. And terraces resident expressed concern regarding the view blockage. So to address that, they have dropped the height of the northern portion of the building to 50 feet, as was in the approved PUD. And they have also met with the terraces condo complex earlier this, earlier this month, and a letter from Cindy Trulow was attached to your, an email from Cindy Trulow was attached to your staff report. I believe she is present here today as well, and she may be speaking. So in terms of what we are looking for from you is, again, basically your ideas on design and the unit mix. In terms of staff, we do have an issue with the building design and massing, and also the choice of color, color and materials palette. We also feel that a good wayfinding signage is needed on both ends of the bridge walk. We also, there was a lot of discussion on the public market sign that is proposed on the railroad elevation, but there was no agreement on whether the sign was appropriate for the site, so we would be looking forward to your ideas on that. And we felt that the roof treatment needed to be refined and be non-reflective, and I think the applicant has been working on that as well, along with the terraces residents. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to the applicant to walk you through their design.
Nathan Hong, I'm Senior Vice President with Avalon Bay, and we're happy to be here again with you tonight to show you our progress on both Parcels A and D. And as Maru kind of highlighted, you know, on Parcel A, we've made a, you know, we heard you loud and clear, and we made a conscious decision to come back and take a look at the pedestrian walkway connection to the bridge, and, and that's one of the reasons that the unit count's reduced, you know, that in addition to reducing the height of the, of the building on the south side. We, as Maru has also highlighted, we, we have with the architect met with the terraces and not only to, to kind of, you know, pay a little bit closer attention to what their views were and their vantage point, but also to kind of look at it from that, from the so-called eastern elevation of the, from the railroad end. Similarly, on Parcel D, we've gone back and taken a look at that, and a much harder look at how the townhomes and works with the rest of the master development and 63rd Street and Shellmount, taking a look at the building massing a lot more. And overall, in general, I think we're also highlighted early on that we've also met with of course staff, but also with the city's design architect a few times to, to go through both the massing, the design aesthetics, and, and even as far as family-friendly and looking at our units and explaining to both the design architect and, and looking at it deeply ourselves to make sure we're addressing some of those components, but also getting input that we've incorporated. So overall, we're, you know, excited about where we are and love to show you the progress. And I'll turn it over to both our architect and our landscape architect to show you some of those details and look forward to your comments.
Good evening. My name is Tom Cox, and I'm with TCA Architects. We're the architects for both Parcel A and Parcel D. I think, excuse me, granddaughter called, I think most people come here in front of the Design Review Group and the Commission and thank you once you finally let them go do their project. But for me personally, I'd like to thank you for our last study session, because it was very direct, very cryptic, very pointed, and very well-thought-out. As a result of that, it really caused the team to dig back into the project and, and look at what we had done. We thought we had a good building. I mean, we really came to you with, you know, honest and integrity, and we thought we had done a good job. But we missed some stuff. And so it becomes a team framework, I think, between city and architect and developer and builder and master planner, to get that input and to go back and rethink what we thought was good and make it better. thought was good and make it better. So what we're here to do tonight is, we don't think we're done, and so we're looking for input. What we want to do is present to you what we heard, and then present to you what we thought we did to make it better. So initially, I think the biggest thing that came up, especially on Parcel A, we'll deal with A only, was the bridge connection. And what we had done initially was take the bridge behind the building and put it into a public plaza, and it became extremely clear to us, very, very quickly, that that was not what the, what you were looking for. So we went back and dug in. There was two things that affected the building dramatically. One is the 50-foot height limitation on the south side, and the, actually, 140-foot height limitation on the north side, which really set up a dynamic on these two buildings that was very much different than what we had before, which was an 85-foot building all the way across the street. That was the approved footprint and the approved height limitation that was in the PUC. So that made us really look at a completely different approach to the building, and driving the walkway from the bridge through, between the two buildings and making a direct connection to the street, bringing people across and down, became our paramount concern. And how did, how could we do that? We needed to make our spaces safe, we needed to make the walkway safe, we needed to make it a, a nice place to be, because this becomes part of the public realm. So we worked hard on that. We reduced the size of the building on the right, it became a much smaller building, we're now capped off at 50 feet on the south. You were concerned about the value of the corner plaza on the, on the north side of the building. We still have a plaza, but it's much reduced, and that leasing center that we had that was sort of an iconic little building tucked around the corner, that building is no longer there, and we've moved the leasing in the lobby to our building into the center, and it gives a nice break between those two buildings. We've also tried to reflect more of the rhythm of the retail with the building and the building materials and the, and how we bring the building to the ground. And we've updated the colors and the materials, and we have all the percentages of those materials and how they're applied to the building as part of the package. We're using a combination of stucco, we're using cementitious panels, we're using metal, we're using rainscreen, and we're using that judiciously throughout the entire building. Some of the things that we also did is, is that we created different programs for our courtyards. We do know that the family-friendly, and we've heard it tonight, both from the public and from you, that family-friendly is very important, and as Nathan said, we took that into consideration, and we've made some, we hope, large moves towards that, and we're, we'd like to talk to you about those tonight also. So the big, the big idea, how do I do the full screen here? View?
Yeah, full screen, down there.
Down, down?
Down, down.
Down.
There, there.
Full screen. There we go, thank you. So again, we're dealing with Parcel A, it's a triangular site, it's on the right, and we've been through the master plan, the street scene and all of that tonight, now we can probably move past that. The building to the south is now 50 feet, and it is a reflection of the street and the streetscape, and the scale of pedestrianization is a much lower building. What we tried hard to do is to create a gateway. The gateway is earmarked by the tower that you see on the corner, and it tells people, it helps identify where that break in the building is and how that pathway will work to get up to the bridge, through the pedestrian walkway, and over to the Amtrak station. So the gateway is a key component of what we're trying to, to create. We have the smaller building on the right, and then we have a larger building on the left. We did have a chance to meet with the city architect numerous times, talked about floor plans, materials, building, rhythm, color. We also had a chance to meet with the terraces folks, and we had a good interaction with them and a good dialogue, and some of their concerns are things that we're currently working on, but I think we heard what they had to say, and I'll try and illuminate some of those as we go through the rest of the project. We also wanted to make sure that we created distinct edges around the project. Each building always has four sides, and, and there's never really a back. So we try and do the right thing for all sides of the building and bring architecture as best we can to the building. So this is the street scene for the building, and we really, we had and we did, again, walk through Emeryville, and we looked to see what some of the messages were from the buildings that are in the city. It's definitely a manufacturing, formerly industrial, there's a strong office presence in the city, and we tried to emulate some of those thoughts, and then we have a very strong image and a very strong presence across the street, also with the public market. This diagram shows the retail and the pedestrian access to our leasing lobby, and also to the stair that goes up and over the top to the bridge. It shows our bicycle path, it shows the retail on right and left on, on our lobby, which is the blue area. A couple of things, one of the things that was brought up is that we only had one point of access, and it was on the north side, and we have introduced a second point of access, probably a primary point of access on the south. So now the garage has a complete penetrability and access from two sides, so we think that helps a lot with traffic issues. We're about 13,500 square feet of retail. As you can see, we've pulled the building back on the north and south and tried to create an opportunity for some indoor/outdoor spaces. We pulled our leasing center and our lobby for our building and pulled that adjacent to the stair, and we're wrapping that with glass, and we're really looking forward to having a, a visible, transparent experience as you go up and down the stairs. April Phillips is here today, or tonight, or tomorrow morning, however long this goes, and she's going to be talking about the landscape. The building is wrapped around the outside, so parking garage is really never visible on this building, and you can see just that beginning hint on the right slide there of how the different courtyards interact with the pedestrian passo or the walkway that goes to the bridge. On our second level on the left, we have some of our recreation, we have our fitness center, our chill lounge, we have a plaza that's outside the units that goes up to another level. So there's multiple levels on the project, and I think it makes for an interactive and kind of a fun space to deal with. The building on the right also is now only two stories above the podium, getting us up to the 50 feet, so that lowers the profile and allows a lot more light and air into the building. So when you get a chance to reboot the screen, feel free.
It's not going to work yet.
Hey, I'm going to try and look at this from here.
I know, it's not going to work yet.
Not yet. So this is a, a description of some of the materials, and we've taken the elements of the building, and we've kind of blown them up, so they're a little clearer to see. It's hard to do this with, you know, computer drawings and renderings, but the materials that we're envisioning are rains, horizontal rainscreens, cementitious panels. At the ground level, we're utilizing brick, board form concrete. At the retail, we're using storefront windows. Our windows are vinyl, thin profile and dark, just getting that on record real quick. And we also are using plaster, but we're using plaster in, in several colors. This would be a view looking, as you're coming up Shellmount heading north, the corner of our building with the lower-level retail, the upper level, you can see the cementitious panels turning, and so we didn't just cut the, the materials off at the corner, we tried to turn the corner and then create some kind of a continuity with the building. As we go down the southern side of the building, this is adjacent to the parking lot, you can see on the left-hand side, we're continuing the cementitious panels. Right at the end of that is where we have our delivery, trash, and all of our kind of loading and unloading, and then further to the right is where we have our entrance into the garage for pedestrians and guests. We are using cement plaster along that south side, and working with the city architect, we used a more contemporary rhythming of that building as we move towards the side where the railroad is. The top slide is turning that corner. This is the building that faces the railroad and also faces the terraces. Some of the concerns that have come up from the residents were a solid wall, because we now are creating a barrier on both sides, and sound reverberating back and forth was a concern. We've engaged a sound consultant for, to try and come up with a system of baffles on that wall or panels that will help dampen that sound, and so it doesn't cause a, a problem for the residences. Also, the residences were concerned that looking down on the roof of the short building, they can't see the tall building, but looking down on the roof of the short building, that they're going to just see mechanical equipment. So we've engaged our landscape architect to work with us at this point to, after we've laid out the California Title 24 requirements for our HVAC units, our condensers, our screening devices, to come up with some kind of a green screening device that will be on the roof and help block that view directly onto the. So we tried to create an articulation of the south. This is actually the penetration that you can see between the two buildings, the large tall building on the right and the, and the low building, and it's that penetration that goes between the buildings, and we'll show you a blow-up of how that walkway works and how it interacts with the courtyards for both sides. This is the northern side, and where we have our second entry, turning the corner, that's the side that will face ultimately the garage that will be built as part of the master plan. This is a quick snapshot of the bridge connection, and in a second, April's going to come up and walk us through that in a second. And then there's a shot that looks down and across that bridge connection. The goal here was to create something that was interesting. Currently, the, the tower that we have has that stair that wraps around it, it's got a lot of blind spots, it doesn't smell very good on any given day, it's, it's a little bit creepy, and it doesn't have that sense of security. We wanted to bring all of that into the walkway, so we need good lighting, we need good planting, we need an opportunity for people to sit down. We want it to be an experience of moving from the bridge to the sidewalk and, and encourage people to actually utilize that space. So there's a section through the building, I think April's going to show you much better views of that. Another concern of the residents is the terrace was the height of our building. So initially, we had an 85-foot building all the way across. The PUC, the master, the master plan said that that's not what was envisioned, so this slide shows, looking down from the terraces, they were generous enough or, or nice enough to let us go up into their units and look down and take some photography. We dropped those photographs into what is the approved master plan, which is on the lower right, and on, into our project, which is the lower left. If you look straight across from the tracks, you can see the profile of the building, 50 feet to the roof of our building on the left, and then what is allowed, 140 feet, or 45, and our building is now at 85. So that's the, kind of a comparative analysis of, of what the views are and what was approved. Materials is a big issue and always a concern, and I know last time we were here, there was a concern that we had too much stucco. So we went back and actually did a complete takeoff and, and allocated our materials and the location of those materials around the building, and we've given you a percentage breakdown of how those materials occur. So I think, again, it's a little hard for me to see even, but I think our stucco exposure is about 30%, and everything, every other 70% is something else, and that's an example of the materials that we're anticipating using. Floor plans, we're now 185 units, and there's a, a mix. These units are anticipated to be kind of cool, hip, and contemporary. We have one bicycle parking spot for every single unit on the property, and AVB, as an owner, allows bicycles to be brought up and hung in the units, and they even provide in a number of units, something called a gear wall, which gives you the opportunity to bring your bike up if you actually own a decent bike. Three-bedroom features, there's a lot of talk about family-friendly, and typically a project like this, we wouldn't see much of the two-bedroom, three-bedroom, but this became a very, a big focal point for us with the community, with, with you, and, and with ownership. And so what we've tried to do is create opportunities that enhance and encourage families to live here. So our three-bedroom units consist of a series of things that we went through and, and tried to create opportunities for families. Larger storage, we heard things like, where do I put the stroller, where do I, you know, things that are larger and, and more cumbersome, so we created larger storage. Where does my child study? We created alcoves for studying. How do we eat together as a family if we only have a bar? We created separate dining rooms, along with the two bedrooms, double washer and dryer. We think these are some of the key components of, of creating successful, family-friendly units. On the outside spaces, we also created areas where we have chalkboard walls, we have areas for people to sit, we have a movie wall that we've incorporated into our plaza, the lower terrace, and we've also designated the upper terrace as family-friendly opportunity. So with that, as I've talked way too long, April's going to help me out, and we'll be here together and hopefully get some interaction and dialogue going and take good notes.
Okay. Hi, I'm April Phillips with April Phillips Design Works, and this has been a fun project to take to this next level to, before you today. I have my little hand out in case I can't see over there, if it goes out again, but our, our goal here is to create environment that's indoor and outdoor, you know, there's a blend, that we really can celebrate the fact that we're in California, and the trick here is really to concentrate on the landscape, making it fun, make it accessible, make it modern, make it contemporary, and really do some, really what we hope is, you're going to see is some cool things. It is...
Down, down button.
Down button, there. Whoops, nope. Uh-oh, what did I do? Shoot, help me. Oh, there, over there.
Just down, just that down.
Just that one, okay. So as Tom said, we actually have a lot of zones because of the grade change. One of the key things in dealing with the, the grand stair, the linear park, if you will, is that we have to get up 32 feet, okay, and we want to make it fun, and that becomes sort of this whole, the whole blue area is our, our park district, the public realm that goes through the space. On the left-hand side on the north is what we're calling the sun deck terrace, because that is at a different, a different elevation. And on the right-hand side, we actually have two elevations, so the brown represents the upper level that you get off of, from the, the linear park zone, and then the chill out zone is below. So there's all these different grade chains, grade changes happening, which makes it a very fun, fun place to go through and experience. Go back. All right, and this is it altogether, so one of the things we wanted to do was actually also make it dynamic, how do you get through these spaces and really push people through? So the way we decided to do it on this project is to, this use of lines and angles, and we thought that would help to guide people in a fun way without being pushy about it. And so one of the big things that we did is, at the bottom, is to really understand, how can we make 30 feet of gra, grade change on stairs fun? So we see it as a cross between the Spanish steps and the high line, and, and we want to create places and eddies along those stairs that not only do you, for the people who are commuting and want to go up and down fast, they can either go straight up the stairs in, in one manner, but also benches and seats, so people could come out here and have their lunch, have a cup of coffee, whether you're shopping, take a break, so the stairs become a lingering place, not just a pass-through space. And we think that's going to make it a very unique place within Emeryville to, to, everybody's going to want to come. And they're right across from the public market, so, you know, there's this great, really great synergy. We also brought the pedestrian bridge elevator up towards this plaza, so if you do, don't want to go up the stairs, you go right up, up the elevator, and I'm not going to point, but you can see a little square, I'm afraid to touch anything here. And I've shown some of the grades, so you can begin to see, what we tried to do was go up the stairs in a way where the landings were comfortable for people, and then you could go up again and again. So that's the main thing about the stairs. We also want to do a fun thing with lighting. So you can see in the upper right, all of these images on the, on the right-hand side are inspiration, so possibly using LED lights and some kind of lighting effects, so that at night you can come up the building and, up the stairs, and, and you see some fun ways of, of lighting it. We're looking at the walls against the building to incorporate history into some of the features, and then how we mass the landscape and, and how we do the patterning of the, of the, the ground plane, so possibly some, some linear banding kind of patterns. We're going to look at all these things. One of the key things... One of the key things I want to say here right now is that we're also looking at how do we create sort of a fun artistic event and we're calling it the overhead gateways and those are those red bars and how it kind of connects and works with the building, we're not sure yet. But the idea was that you continue to have these canopy thin lines of light that, if you will, that would get you to the bridge. And so it keeps you going, keeps you moving, it draws you through. Next. And the image in the middle is sort of that idea of something that is very simply lit. It wouldn't be that many, but there may be four of them through the path to get you through. Again, the idea of sitting on the stairs as well as stairs happening against you. And then because we have this grade change, we actually have the opportunity in that linear park to actually not always just have raised planters. I know you guys talked about the four-foot planters. This is one area where we can actually go underground more. We have a little more headroom. And that's usually the issue of why you have four-foot planters is because there's really not, between the structural slab and above, you know, you have to go up, not down. So we think this is a great opportunity. So this is the view looking towards the elevator wall. And you see the stairs really come out into the public realm so that you really feel removed from the building and are on this stairs that is its own thing. And there's the opportunity for the wall right at the elevator and then you come up and as you can see, we begin to have landscape. And you can really sense the distance because there's the bridge over the Amtrak lines and, I mean, the train lines and then how you get down. So it's quite, quite a long walk, but it's going to be fun and beautiful. And this is the other direction. So these are some, again, some concept imagery, inspiration imagery of how we might integrate some of that idea of history or fun into the wall and really kind of capture sort of the hip quality of this area. And so that's looking at the lower building. You can really feel the difference in the scale on each side of the space. And the nice thing is the stair that we're, is mostly near the lower building, so it's really not overscaled and overpowered by the building height. So I think this is really kind of cool and it lets in more light. And then these are examples of how we see the different terraces. And one of the things I want to point out is the really interesting thing, having this public realm through our space, is how do we interface it and also create porosity between it? We don't want to shut our courtyards out of the space. We want to kind of integrate it, but we also want to feel like it is a different space. So if you can come out of the courtyard and down in the space, if you were going to go out to the public market, or if you're coming to visit somebody and you know that's the gate, they can meet you at the gate and come in. And there you go. So where was I? I have my space here because I can't see that far. And I guess I can put my... Okay. So the one on the left is what we're calling the sun terrace and we really see, again, using forums and spaces to create more fun. We have this idea of creating these folding benches and folding walls. I personally don't like to just see planter walls when I go to a podium. I want to see benches hanging on walls. I want my walls to become another feature. So what we're doing in this one is really kind of creating fire pits with sort of angled walls that create a sort of real cool nook, high bar tables that allow you to kind of glimpse and see other people. We have a, we're thinking of using pebble seating in the sun terrace. And then there's a whole area to put sort of more lounging type of chairs so that people can relax. And this is where we see a lot of sun coming in because it's the opening from the smaller building down to the space. On the right-hand side, as you go through, once you come in, you can actually go into the building either way or you can go down the stairs. And at the stairs, we also took the same idea that we've done at the grand staircase coming up from the plaza on this urban realm and create sort of an amphitheater effect. So some of the seats, the stairs become benches again, and this is the area where we have a movie wall because our grade is about 15-foot difference roughly from one terrace to the other. So the back wall, we can do the movies and this is the, the lower terrace is the one with our chill lounge. So the idea is that this is the social nest hub and you can come out with your computers, you're going to come up there for nights for movies. Again, another fire pit, really cool seating. And one of the things we're really trying to do is every patio on each of these podiums where we're coming out. So people have access also on those levels to come in and out of these spaces. And the various materials, of course, would be sympathetic with the building, but really in concrete, pavers, wood, metal, all of those different things and so on. It was still not on. And this is one of the sections through the terraces and you can begin to see how the forms, how fun it is. I mean, again, with the family-friendly idea, actually every space is family-friendly. The most fun for the kids might be any of them because all of the things are going to be done in such a way that it's discovery, it's unique, it's a little bit different. You can climb it, you can sit in it. It's not just a, it's not like a play structure, if you will. Though on the upper terrace on the right, we do have the chalkboard. We have the ability to have a climbing, climbing object wall. We have sort of the pebble seating which could be also climbed on. So we're trying to integrate things that, so that it just is a great experience and an interesting place to be. On the family activity terrace too, we do have the bigger barbecue, the more communal tables. In other areas, we have smaller groupings. So we're really thinking uniquely how people can use this space and go through the space. And I think, we are very close. The last page we had was just, again, some images. We're having one area where you can do yoga outside. We have just how we would group the tables and chairs, the notion of the lounges in the sun area. And then we're really just, again, looking at materials. So this is just sort of the first blush at the kind of way the feature, you know, the features that we might use and how it might feel. Kind of fun, again, and being outdoors and celebrating that. And here, you may want to come back up.
So that's pretty much it. I think one of the really fun things about this is the challenge that you gave us that we initially, I think, balked at, which was running that public space through two private areas. And what happened is, as a result of that, we found that the interaction between the private spaces and the public walkway became very dynamic. One of the suggestions we got at the very beginning from the bridge to the center of the, of the first building was to create some townhouses along that edge. They gave it kind of a stoop and porch feel as you came off of the bridge and started on your pathway down to the street. And so we did. We incorporated some townhouses along that edge. And after we looked at them, they were really kind of fun because they're two-story townhouses. They're pretty unobtrusive and it feels like a little village. We also have gates so that you can come and go to the bridge from the entire building. So the encouragement for us is to get people to actually get out, cross the bridge, use Amtrak, use the buses, use Emery Go Round. Try and get that connectivity to the street, the connectivity to the transportation and really try and enforce that. So as a result, we've made, I hope, some really solid headway. And again, we know we're not done and we're looking for your input and we welcome it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
A couple. The townhouses that do access that central corridor you were just mentioning, do they, I see they've got little porches or patios at that level. Do they have access? Like can you, they get from their patio to that walk?
Yes.
That public walk?
Yes. That is the intention. We thought that if we didn't do that, that they would be meaningless.
Okay.
So we wanted to have direct access. Some of them, one of the comments that came from the last study session was they, I think gentleman said he wanted to see some kind of a slope, take out some of that, the height with some slopes. So from the bridge towards where the stairs are, we have a very gentle 2% to 3% slope. So what that does is it starts dropping the bridge down below the level of the townhouses. So now we have an opportunity to create those little stoops and porches. It was a natural, wonderful thing that happened. And when somebody suggested, we, oh, you can't do that, you got people right on the walkway. And then we did it and it was great. So that's the thing about interaction. I mean, sometimes you just don't see, you work on something really, really hard and you get blinded to what the opportunities are. And so this has opened up a great, a different look at how this building operates, these buildings.
The privacy fences that are between the private courtyards and the public way, I mean, is that, is that completely opaque or is that, I mean, is there visibility through those?
There's visibility through them.
There is?
Yeah. We think, again, that physical eye-to-eye, eyes on that walkway. The important thing for us too is that to have that walkway be safe, it has to be well-lit, it has to have people with eyes on that walkway 24/7, as much as we possibly can. So the answer is yes, it is trant. It is a permeable space, yes.
And I guess my last one was just the sign. I mean, have you had conversations with the terraces?
You mean that big sign that we put up?
Yeah.
Well, our goal here was, and it was a little controversial, people going, don't show the sign, but we wanted to show you the sign. Wanted to show you the sign because we wanted that question. We want to announce the public marketplace. We want people coming across that bridge to know where they're going and to make it, again, to make it fun. So these are just devices that we're trying to find that make this a unique experience. So yes, we haven't talked to anybody, I don't think, I think you've seen the sign, but then they said, don't show the sign. But we think the sign could be really fun.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public comment on this item. So if anyone would like to speak on public marketplace, Schelmone site, I think also known as Site A, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Cindy Truelove and the good news is I don't have the measles, but I have something, so I apologize for my voice. We just really want to, first of all, thank the commission, Planning Commission for all that you've done already and to help move this kind of in a direction that makes it much more exciting for those of us who live at the terraces and want to move forward with great infill, but still have our views left and still have a really exciting community. So we noted that with what we saw when they came to us already and thanks to the proponents who were willing to come twice, once to come shoot from several of our terraces to then be able to create a real sense of what this would look like. And then again, to come on as guests of our board to present to our community. We had 10 or 15 people and had lots of interest and I just mostly am here to say thank you. But I do want to just share that there were a couple of concerns and I think Tom certainly covered one of them, which is the sound canoning problem that we think could be a problem. And so we're very grateful for their efforts to create some baffling, something that will affect that to the degree that's possible. Secondly, there's also a big concern with a big white roof that we'll all be looking down on. When TMG worked with us around this project, they proposed some sort of green roof and we know, you know, we're not going to have the California Academy of Sciences out our window, but something that will be appealing and not just reflect heat back to us. So we look forward to continuing to collaborate with proponents and with you all to make that possible. And I will say, no, there was no discussion of the sign. No, I mean, we know, we live in an urban environment and I'm sure if we can come up with something that's aesthetically pleasing and that won't block views and would invite people into our neighborhood, that would be a good thing. But thank you again for coming to visit and for hearing us.
Anyone else like to speak?
Me again. So my wife, who's also an architect, attended one of the community meetings and where there were many problems with the previous scheme. And I told her that when, it's always nice for architects to hear good things when they do make positive changes. So I, both of us feel that this is a tremendously improved scheme, that it's really a very good response to the criticism that they receive. The through walkway is the natural solution. I've used that bridge many a time. And so I think, I think it's a really good scheme and the overall building, I think, is quite nice. I think it's a kind of elegant, clean, contemporary, modernism that I think of when I think of the Emeryville projects that are going on. One comment that I would make about the walkway through is I would be, I noticed that there are these planners and sort of pinch points. I'd be a little careful about the clearances as one moves through there. The bridge right now is none too wide. And, you know, I've taken my bike across many, people take bikes across, people walk, et cetera. And so I would be careful about pinching down that walkway to narrow points. The red gates, I was just going to mention that you might look up Fushimi Inari in Japan, that series of red gates that that reminds me of, that's a kind of playful reference. And I think, I think it's a fun idea. I like, I like generally the spirit of the landscaping. In terms of the sign, one is it doesn't block views from the terraces because of its location. It's going to be right in line with the taller building. Secondly, is I think it's really critical to have because I know that I've oftentimes seen people who stop at Amtrak, who are strangers to Emeryville, they're waiting for a train, they don't know what's over there. And now all you'll see is this apartment building, you won't know that there's a public market. You'll just see a bridge going to an apartment building and that, and so if you're a stranger, you will not, you need that sign. Right now, you can see the public market and you can see the public market sign. So I would strongly encourage that that sign be included because like I say, otherwise people will not know it's there. And so anyway, I think it's a, it's a very strong project and I'm very happy to see the kinds of adjustments that the developer and the architects have made.
Any other speakers? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment and we'll go ahead and bring this back for discussion. And we've got about 20 minutes before, a little more than 20 minutes before we need to extend the meeting. So let's see if we can get through this, this one item before we have to extend. So, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, as usual, mine are written down, so we'll try to get through them pretty quickly. First of all, this is a much improved project. Thank you very much. A big thank you for relocating the central staircase and lowering this southern building. A couple of things regarding the staircase, and I understand the playfulness and the fun and everything, but please straighten out the path. I understand the desire to make it interesting and inviting, but like the path through Christie Park, we're trying to reprogram the thinking towards walking as a transit option more than just a recreational activity. So walking paths, more than any other path, need to be direct and not zigzagged. Secondly, I need to ask that you add bike troughs on the stairways. Bikers would like the option of taking the stairs as well as the elevators and Wyrm has agreed to install them on their eastern side of their staircase. It just makes them so much easier to traverse. I actually was coming home from work yesterday and at 65th Street, I came across a three-city train that was going slower than I could bike ride. So I rode to the train station and actually carried my bike up and over the stairs because I don't use those elevators and actually ran into another biker coming up the other way because we couldn't see each other. So bikes would definitely use this bridge and we definitely need some bike troughs in there. And actually, when it actually comes to us for approval, I'm going to make that a condition of approval if they're not in the plan or request that anyway. I really like everything else you've done with the bridge connection. I think you've really, really come a long way. There are a couple of points where I strongly disagree with the city's development coordinating committee. I don't feel we want more articulation and better use of color. These are the methods that, of the past that we're trying very hard to steer away from. I don't feel the public art component should coordinate with what's being done under the Powell Street Bridge. It's a bit like buying a painting to match your sofa. Each piece of art that we install needs, should stand on its own merits. One piece of art does not need to match any others. If it did, it would be decoration and not art. The eastern railroad side of the building needs more work. It's, it's really looking like the backside of a building. Just some quick suggestions, maybe increase the size of the windows on there. And I'm speaking more of the more southern building than the more northern building, the one that's all brown and has the little slit windows. You know, so maybe increase those windows and then maybe, maybe you could do something with your public art there. Maybe that could be where your, your public art goes to really break that up. The public market sign again, is where I agree with the DCC indirectly. I like the sign. It reminds me of Pike's Place Market in Seattle, which is very iconic. If it's not well-received, maybe you take it off the roof and mount it on the side of the building, right by the staircase there to where it's still there, still visible, but not up on it. But I kind of like it up on, on the thing. And like our resident architect had suggested with that new building blocking that, the other consideration is when the transit building gets built, the stairs for that entrance is going to be way over on Horton Street. So when someone's standing on the platform, they're not going to be able to know how to get over there and what's over there. So I think something there is really important. So I think, you know, it is, it does work and it is a wayfinding sign, which is, which was requested that we put wayfinding there. In addition- In addition, I like the wayfinding signs that you showed, both in Plan Pages L 1.2 and again on L 1.3, the ones that are embedded, that have kind of the brass lettering or the arrows and stuff. I think they're very artful and easy to interpret. As a suggestion, thinking on the side, on your side of the tracks, the signs could direct people to the Amtrak station, Doyle Hollis Park, or San Pablo Avenue. We want to put stuff in there, because it's permanent, that are not going to go away, so I don't think we'd want to put business names and stuff like that in there. I feel the north section of the building, where the bike shop and pet wash are located, need windows. If they may be transom windows, they may be opaque, but there needs to be some form of natural light coming into those spaces. And fresh air would also be nice if it could be done securely. There are a few areas that I need to see more detail, and those are the illustrations on Page A 2.1, A 6.3, and A 1.2, showing the new location of the crosswalks. There seem to be some conflicting ideas of where the actual crosswalk will go. I believe it's now showing in most of the drawings where most people want it. And I need to know if the bus is still there in front of the central staircase. So when you come back, if you can kind of really tell us exactly where the bus is going to be and where the crosswalks are going to be placed, that'll be helpful. And explain the treatment, the finished treatment of the garage levels on the south side that are going to face the high house. I can kind of get an idea, but I really kind of want to know what those are going to look like. So again, because I think the point is really clear from all of us, that we don't want things looking like a parking garage. And then give detail of the south-facing upper level of the north building. So as you're looking from the bridge through the courtyard into that north facade, the illustrations in the plan doesn't really show me windows and how that is going to look. I'm sure it's going to be great looking, but I, it'd be helpful to approve a project where we could see it. And then something, your plans here, you showed tonight on the presentation, gave us the idea, but I'd like to see the plans, how those different levels of the courtyards look. I think that's an amazing idea. It looks really, really exciting. I like the activities and everything you guys have, have put in there. So that's my comments. I think it's a good job. Thank you.
Well, I also am very, very happy to see the grand staircase back, so thank you very much. And it's, it's great. I definitely disagree with the bigger scale on the railroad side, which was in one of the beginning diagrams, where you're talking about the different sides of the buildings. I think that the integrity of the project really comes in question when the treatment changes so drastically and becomes kind of like the backside of the building, which is really what both of those look like to me. So that needs a lot of work. I also, on the grand staircase, looking, I need to, I would really like to see section or elevations of both the north side and the south side, explaining if there's this history wall, really making sure that there is a human scale to the entire project. It sounds like there's going to be, but I'd really like to see that fleshed out. And also, on the larger steps going down towards, towards Shellmount, I would like to, I'm thinking we could green it up a little bit, too. It's, I know it's relatively shady space, some sun in the afternoon, but maybe some of those seat walls could also be planters to bring people down. I really like the LED arbors, and I think that works to, to carry you along. But the weird-shaped kind of trapezoid bed, that main, on the main path of travel, is cutting it really tight. And I agree that it needs to be a main thoroughfare. And I like the whimsy, but it needs to, it needs to be much greater access all the way across for actual moving of people and bicycles. The sign, I also think that it's a good idea to have a sign, because you're on, but I think it's a little large, so I'm guessing we could probably tone that down a little bit. So the last thing is, the landscape plan definitely is fun and family-friendly. The activity areas are great, but the mix of the current proposal of bedrooms is not at all. And so that would really need to increase in terms of having two and three bedrooms to have room for families. It's our actual, from the October study session, we've gone backwards, so that's, that's not really all right. And the last thing is the use of materials. I think that we're, we're really looking to see a higher quality of materials. Looking at the 3706 San Pablo project, there was moving, maybe we move along the lines of using some type of wood grained rain screen. And rain screen is basically just cement board with lines in it. Is that correct, or am I mistaken, usually?
Necessarily.
No? Excuse me?
Many materials.
It can be many materials. So that would, I would need to see that fleshed out a little bit more to, to get on board with that. And also, I think the more sedate color combinations that we're looking to see more of in Emeryville, and more refinement in general. That's it.
Well, in the safe time, I'll just comment on a couple of things here. I'd like to see the elevations of these two buildings somehow match one another, so it doesn't look like two separate buildings, as it seems to in this one perspective that we have on the screen right now. And I'm very pleased with the new path layout and the bridge relationship. That's it.
I think it's going in a great direction. I really like that the grand stair is there. I do think that path of travel needs to be a little bit more continuous, and I definitely agree that it needs the bike trough. So in order to do that and do it well, and have people be able to move up and down those easily without conflict, you need to work the configuration out a little bit. The rear facade, I also agree, needs a little bit more work and more interest. And I definitely would like to see much more of a green roof element, not necessarily the Academy of Sciences, but I think that that would be a wonderful opportunity. Again, it'll be visible from a lot of different places, so, and it's, it's something that we should be doing, just because we should be doing those kinds of environmentally sensitive things. I'm really, I was very excited to see the exploration of materials around the walkway and the courtyards and the terraces and things like that. And I would love to see a little bit more richness of the materials on the building, on the apartment buildings themselves. And also, an up, a lot of the buildings that we have that we're saying are family-friendly don't actually have real family-friendly outdoor spaces. It seems like you're creating that, so increasing the bigger units in order to make that work better makes a lot of sense. And I would also like to see some less studios, less one bedrooms, and more units that would actually bring children in, that would have, you know, be able to take advantage of those fun spaces.
Yeah, I appreciate a lot of what you're doing here. It's really coming together. The, I guess I only have, really have a few comments. The alignment of the crosswalk with the stairs, I think, is important. And even for what's across the street, it makes more sense than the current alignment or the offset alignment. I, if the, I mean, this is a case where I think there is merit to having the sign. I think if you're going to have this public market sign, it really needs to be a work of art, needs to be something like the Grand Lake sign, maybe not quite that flashy and large, but something that people are all, I mean, it basically represents the neighborhood, and that's where I think there's a lot of value in it. And then to the unit designs, and really looking at some of the unit designs, the two bedrooms that look more like dorm, dormitory-style housing than anything that a family would ever, would ever rent or buy.
So yeah, thanks for putting the grand staircase back in. I think it's a great addition. There are some, so the, I think because of that, you know, I mean, obviously, this is an entirely different proposal than we saw last time. I think there are some elements of the architecture that dropped out that I, that I miss. One is kind of the, there were some really kind of irregular balconies on the, the last design that we saw, that I really kind of liked, and I thought it was kind of playful and, you know, it added some interest to the building. I think, you know, this, this building has gotten a lot more regular, and I think, I think there's some room to play with it a little bit and be a little bit more irregular. I do, I think that the one thing I'd really like to see is, so in this image that we're looking at here, this, that corner of the building is going to be a really key, it's a really key focal point of that building and a really key entrance to the whole marketplace. That's going to be how a lot of people arrive, and that's going to be one of the first, their first views of the marketplace. I'd really like to see a stronger corner on that, on that building, and, you know, maybe a more vertical feature or something on the, on that corner. But it's just something to add, to add interest, I think. And I will also, Tom, I'm going to say, I will mourn the loss of the cube, but not, not for very long, but, but I do miss the cube.
Oh.
And then just lastly, the sign, I think, I think is kind of obscenely large and out of scale with the building. I, you know, I'm not the biggest fan of roof signs. I think, you know, if, if a roof sign, I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunities here to do something that is not a roof sign. I mean, you could put a wall sign on, you know, at the same elevation on the taller building. You could put a wall, you know, there's plenty of blank wall space on the, on the lower building to put a, a wall sign as well. I think if you, you know, if you really must do a roof sign, I think something, you know, something more horizontally oriented that is more in scale with the building, but I think, right now, it just looks really out of scale. And then also that, those elevations that face the railroad tracks, I think there's a lot of room for improvement there. I understand the sound issues, and I thank you guys for working with the terrace residents on that issue. When that kind of all gets flushed out, we'd really like to see you look at the three-dimensionality of that elevation. Right now, it's, it's very flat, you know, the windows are kind of irregular and add some interest, but it looks pretty flat. It could just be the, the elevation that we're looking at. But yeah, I would love to see you play with the three-dimensionality, the materials, the colors. I think there's, there's a lot of room there to, to explore different techniques. But all in all, I think it's a good project. Love what you've done with the stairway and the, and the, that pedestrian link. And oh, I also want to echo the, the request for a bike trough. I think that's a great idea.
And one thing I just thought of is, I mean, that's my gateways thing, but you could do some kind of a gateway sign when the bridge drops into the, you know, into that cut. It could be, it could even be lit up, it could be something, isn't there a boardwalk or pier somewhere that has sort of a?
Just a arch over the?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Like that. Yep. All right. So I think that concludes this item.
The meeting?
What's that?
You want to extend the meeting, Dave?
Yeah, how long, how long do you guys think we can?
It seems to take a half hour at least for each of you.
An hour.
At least. I'm an IDL, I could do it, I could like to get it done and put through, but I'm an IDL, I could stay up till 12:30, no problem.
I, I'm going to doze off if we stay a whole lot longer.
What's on the agenda for?
Um, not a lot. We have, tentatively, the Christie Avenue Park Final Development Plan for approval in February. We have a school moving into an existing building that needs a use permit because, from the Planning Commission, because of parking. And we have the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center Master Sign Program. I think it would be doable to continue the next item to the February meeting, although I'm not sure how the applicants feel about that.
I think the applicant wants to say something.
I have, I have a thought. This building D is not nearly as complex to describe or to tell you the changes we've made or the requests that you had of us. I think I can get through it, and it's up to you. I think I can get through it in 10 minutes. And at least you'll have something, you can give us your feedback, and then we can, we can, we can work on it. It's up to you. I-
We could extend the meeting, say, till midnight, and if we're not done at midnight, then continue it to February.
Well, I, I would maybe propose this, that we maybe forego the applicant's presentation upfront, because I don't think the building is that complicated. We can take public comment, give comments, and then if they want to respond to any comments that we've given, then we can invite them back up at the end.
It works for me.
All right, okay.
Would you like a staff presentation?
If it's brief.
I don't think it's necessary. I'd just like to make, ask Tom one thing. The presentation that you have in your PowerPoint, is that exactly the same as the plans that the commission has, or have you made changes?
It's very, very close. Only, it's only been upgraded, like landscape's been upgraded a bit. The family, the family-friendly areas and the clustering of units in an area, in, together to create some dynamic are a little bit more evolved, but I, like I said, I can hit that. Ow, yeah.
I think I could understand it just from what you said.
Yeah.
Can you, can you get rid of this presentation from the screen?
Yeah.
And put up some representative graphic of the other building?
Yeah, I can, if I can find it.
Yeah, can Maru help him do that?
Chair Moss.
It should be on this presentation.
We do need to take a vote to extend.
Do you want to take a vote?
Yeah, so let's, let's just extend to midnight. Maybe we might even be able to get done before then, but I'll, I'll make a motion to extend to midnight.
I'll second it.
Perfect.
Any objections?
Okay, without objection. That was Moss and Keller, right? Got it.
You're good.
So we're just going to take public comment?
Yeah, I guess we'll start with public comment. So if anyone, if there's anyone who would like to speak on Marketplace Theater Site, or also known as Parcel D, please come forward. Anyone? Last call? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment. Commissioner Gunkel, do you want to get us started?
Sure. Yeah, I think on this one, some of the, some of the labeling was a little unclear or not as precise. So just making sure that that ribbed element continues, that you've got on two sides of that corner. Right now, it's, it's shown on the renderings, but in some of the plans, it sort of stops at the second floor, third floor level. And just sort of defining what that is and describing the signage. I see the signage varying in different renderings. And what's on the sign, is it really saying Avalon? The, the courtyard cutout, I mean, at one point, I think that made a lot of sense where it is, where it's currently shown. I think when the, when the grocery store was a couple, like, shorter, and that cutout might have actually provided a visible, you know, visual connection through, down to Shellmount. Now, I guess it's primarily a location that allows sunlight in at certain times of day. It's okay, I, I don't know. It just doesn't, there's really no specific logic to where it's at anymore. I do like that there, the, I think there's a lot of the courtyard, the active space looks good. I like that most of the courtyard-level patios have direct access to the courtyard. I do, this is the main thing, I feel like the townhouses should be on 64th Street and the garage facing the parking lane. I don't think, I mean, it's a parking lane, we're calling it a parking lane, there's a garage on the other side of it. That's where the garage, if we're going to have a location where the garage is open to the exterior, it should be on that, that parking lane and not on 64th Street.
I think that also, if the townhouses were on 64th Street, they'd get a little bit more light when you come out of them, instead of being at the bottom of another tall building on the, on a narrow street. Let me get my comments. I actually, aside from- I actually, aside from looking at that planter issue again, and separating the building units with a lot of planting areas, it's hard to tell what's going on with the courtyard. I'd like to see, be sure that there's a lot of access between the units and the courtyard. And when it gets late, I get a little bit fuzzy, I think. I had one more. I had one more, but I'll pass, and it'll come back to me.
Please. Use your microphone.
Well, again, I'd like to see a little more continuity in the elevations and its relationship to the apartment city, the building where the market is going to be located, so that there's some continuity along the street. You get up to the next block and going between 64th and 65th, and the elevations are very consistent, and they wrap around on the side. And I think that's an important feature that should be looked into here.
Yeah, it's actually pretty hard to read from the -- just the scale of the design, what's going on at ground level, but you know our drill. We want no blank walls. We want it to be activated, pedestrian-friendly. I generally like the materials. I think the colors, again, they're a little bit contrasty. Could be more calm. And I also was thinking that same thing about that cutout, that it doesn't really mean anything now. Not that I don't think it's still not a reasonable thing to have light and air in that space, but not quite the same as what it was. And once again, I think more family-friendly units, less one-bedrooms and more three-bedrooms would really make this much more of a family-friendly project. And I actually look forward to seeing the fruits of your collaboration with the person that we've -- the city has made as our design consultant. And so I look forward to seeing a little bit more work in that department on this project.
Okay. Once again, a much improved project. I think this building is a vast improvement over the previous. I love everything about the southeast corner. I agree with Commissioner Gunkel that the -- they need to be consistent. What I'm seeing here on our computer screen is what I want to see in the finished project. I think that's just really neat. The vertical elements with the long skinny windows, the corner balconies, the large corner storefront windows, or the double-height lobby, it's all just great. I feel the overall architecture is something I would see in San Francisco, Portland, or Seattle. Again, there are places I disagree, or I -- there are places that the DCC and I diverge and converge. Again, the DCC has concerns about the materials and colors. I value that the architect used restraint in the placement and selection of colors. The colors highlight the architectural details without being a substitute for the architectural details. And the materials, we keep asking for something other than stucco, and here we get it, and I don't know what the concern is. Maybe it would be helpful if staff gave us in their report more particulars of what they didn't like, rather than just saying they didn't like something, so that I wouldn't have to kind of be the bad guy. Where the DCC and I converge on this is the setting of the townhouse and the adjacent communities. I think everything is in their current location is where it needs to be on the ground floor. I understand what people are saying about 64th Street. 64th Street is on the north side. It's dark. It's wet. In the middle of the day, you go down that street, this time of year, the street is wet, even if it hasn't been raining. Emmy Apartments, all their services are on that side of the building, all their utility boxes, their driveway, the driveways coming out of -- what is the new name of the carton artistry? Their driveways come out of there. And if we want the activity in the public market, and we want 63rd Street to be activated, this is where the townhouses belong, in my opinion. So I think the way everything is set up in the building currently in this plan is just where they should stay. I think it's really good. Trying to catch up here with myself. I think the upper courtyard is very well done. It has a great layout, as well as the placement of the user amenities. I also like how it opens up to the south. It may not have a view, but it's going to have sunshine the part of the -- most part of the day. And I think they're programmed in that area, the use of that area is pretty well planned. I like the really big round lounge things, almost like a cruise ship. Additionally, I really like the setback treatment at the top of the building. There's a rhythm and a cohesive feeling to the entire building, while it still provides some unique and smartly placed, strong architectural elements. Where before this was the weakest building of the entire project, I now think it's the better of the two that I've been able to comment on tonight. A couple of the details to consider is make sure that the bike shop and pet room, again, have windows. And maybe the metal screens covering the parking area of the garage on 64th Street could be patterned rather than just that square, simple mesh. So maybe something like on the Order of Oak Walk, or what they were proposing on the affordable housing tonight down there. But for me, I feel the project is pretty much a go, and it's probably one of the best projects I've seen from Avalon. I like how the -- I'm not really in agreement with Commissioner Cardoza about this separation. I like that they have a rhythm. They kind of match, but they're not matchy-matchy. I mean, it's going to be next to the Emmy Apartments, which themselves are very different. So I kind of like how it blends, but yet it becomes kind of different buildings and different neighborhoods, and I don't want everything to be really matchy-matchy. And I just -- the picture we're looking at here, I just think this elevation is just amazing. I think it's really, really good. Thank you.
I just have kind of two comments really. I think it's a good building. The elevations are strong. I just, I think I would, I think, I don't know how to articulate this, but on the Shellmount, I think for me, the Shellmount elevation is kind of the weakest, and I'd like to see a little work on that. When I look at it, it's, you know, so you have this sort of tower feature that's a little bit taller, and then after that, the building just, you know, it's a little bit kind of rictilinear. And I, you know, when I look at that elevation, it -- I think, oh, well, the building needs kind of an accent color. But then I look at the other elevations, and I'm like, oh, well, that bronze is your accent color. So there's just something about that elevation that I think it could -- I don't know what it is, if it's, it needs a little, you know, maybe some sort of horizontal break in that larger portion of the building or something, but I think it needs just a little something to add some interest. And then the, you know, on the, what is this now? The north elevation, I think maybe you could find, you know, one additional place to add that accent color on that elevation. I think, you know, the elevation is good. I just, I think a little additional color wouldn't hurt it. It's a little black and white, that side. And then, what was my -- oh, my other, my only other comment is, as I stated before, I'm going to state again, I think that the townhome units on the ground floor should not be loaded from the rear as well. You know, in order to, you know, in order to come from the garage to the, you know, the front of the building and enter your unit, you'd have to walk about an extra 30 feet, probably, to, if they didn't have that access in the back. So I don't really see it as an inconvenience or anything like that, but I think it'll really add to the neighborhood to have that activity on the street, kind of everywhere. So those are my comments.
I remembered my other comment was about the unit mix again. It's over 50% studios and one-bedrooms, and it needs to have more larger units. That's it.
And I just, though, I think the thing that's making this rendering pop is the fiber cement rain screens are really appearing kind of glossy. And a lot of times, that's just a rendering thing, and there are plenty of fiber cement rain screens that aren't glossy, and there are some that are glossy now, some that look like wood paneling. I think getting that, that have, having it not only be a different color than the plaster, but actually feel like a different texture than the plaster in that glossiness is going to be key.
I promised 10 minutes, and I'll do my very best. First of all, I appreciate the commentary. This is exactly what we need from you. The really cool part about this site D is it's square. So based on all of your comment, we have taken this building and we have rotated it to every single direction and taken all those functions and put them on every single side. And this is where we settled. And we settled on this for a big reason. The big issue was activate Shellmount, so that's where we are going to put windows, and that's where the bike shop, the leasing, our activity zones are. We want Shellmount to be that activity zone. The townhouses going down 63rd and then turning the corner on the Market Street, the New Market Street, we wanted to reinforce that corner. And we initially didn't do that because across the street was perpendicular parking into a garage. But the city is working with us and with the master developer to create parallel parking, wider sidewalks, more trees. It now becomes a lovely, quiet residential street. So, and it is, it's not south-facing, but as the sun comes around, it's going to catch more sun than if we did 64th. So that was the reason we didn't do 64th, and the parking lot and the stuff across the street, that was another reason. So the ground plane, we think, is very, very strong. The cut in the building, we put that there because there's a potential plaza that delivers us right to that front, and hopefully, as you come down the street, that gives a break in the big mass of the building. It does let sun into that courtyard. We have more three bedrooms in this building. We have really tried to cluster those three bedrooms together so that the family activities are stronger. And the units that we showed you before are the intention of the units that we'll use here. The materials that we're using, I actually don't disagree. I think a couple of the elevations need a little more work, and that's why we're here to talk to you. And so maybe on Shellmount, we need, and this is me, too, I think we need to look at that very, very strong corner and then create something that's sympathetic to that going down Shellmount. It was meant to be a response to the industrial manufacturing across the railroad, and then the rest of the buildings created these different buildings that face different zones, like the residential zone, the commercial zone, the park zone. And so we were trying to do that. So it's the same family of materials, used slightly differently, but turning the corners, and that was the intention. Is there any other questions that I'm missing? We're pretty excited about this building, too, because it's made a giant leap forward. And together, the two projects, I think, are very, should be an extremely good addition to the city. And I can't tell you how excited we are to get to this point with you. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Are there any commissioner comments? All right. Then let's adjourn and go home. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good job.